Next, Planning Commission hearing. I will call the hearing to order at 1:01 PM. Ms. Johnson, can we have a roll call vote?
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. I'll take roll call. Chair Bauckey?
Here.
Vice Chair Wardlow?
Here.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Here.
Commissioner Boss?
Present.
Commissioner DeLucia?
Here.
Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner Wiskom?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is preliminary matters. First is requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or additions of exigent items. Ms. Arkanaga, do we have any of those?
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. No, we do not.
Okay. Next on our agenda is announcements and appeals. Do we have any of those?
Chair Bauckey, we do not.
Okay. Moving on, we are to review, consider, and actions on a whole set of Planning Commission minutes and resolutions. If anybody wants to pull any of those particular ones for discussion or have modifications, please state so. I see no action on that. Could I have a motion on the minutes and the resolution?
Mr. Chair, I'll move item C. 1 through 4 for approval.
And I believe Ms. Lodge wants a second. Is that correct? You have a comment, or you want a second? No, you were on the screen first. We're going to give it to you. Okay. Moving on. With that, Ms. Johnson, can we have a roll call vote?
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. I'll take roll call vote. Commissioner Boss?
Yes.
Commissioner DeLucia?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiskom?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wardlow?
Yes.
Chair Bauckey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next on our agenda is public comments pertaining to items not on this agenda. Do we have any members of the public who have put in a slip to do that, or anybody online?
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. At this time, I haven't received any speaker slips, but if you do wish to speak in person, you can fill out a speaker slip at the back of the room. I'm not seeing any movement, and we do not have any virtual participants at this time. We also did not receive any general written correspondence, so I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Bauckey.
Okay. Moving on with the agenda to item 3, which is a continued item, continued from May 16th, which is for 711 Bath Street. The purpose of this hearing is to consider an appeal of David Chase of the staff hearing officer's denial of an interior setback modification. Before we get into this, do any of my fellow commissioners have any ex-party communications they have to disclose at this time?
I do. I actually, I don't work too far from there, and I've actually revisited the site independently.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, we'll start with the staff presentation, which will be by Ms. Pilar Plummer. You can begin, and we will move on from there. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So I'm Pilar Plummer, Associate Planner with the City of Santa Barbara Planning and Zoning Division, and I'll be giving the staff presentation for 711 Bath Street. The purpose of today's hearing is to consider the appeal of David Chase of the staff hearing officer's denial of an interior setback modification for 711 Bath Street. The standard of review for this application is an interior setback modification to allow for a change of use from an existing residential building to a non-residential hotel use within the required six-foot interior setback. The project description, again, is related to a conversion from residential to non-residential, the existing site, and I'll cover this in a little bit more detail in the presentation, but the site is developed with two residential units currently and a single car garage to the right. This is the existing residence, one story, that is proposed to be converted to a short-term rental. Towards the back of the property is the garage, is the driveway access, and the second dwelling is not shown in this image here. Also, the project will address violations in Enforcement Case 2023-00142, including electrical, plumbing, piping, and conversion of the garage to a laundry room without a permit. As part of this application, the garage is to be converted back to its original permitted condition, which is a garage. This is an aerial view of the project site, so you'll see it highlighted in yellow here, outlined in yellow here. The blue line here represents Mission Creek, so that's abutting the rear of the property. Again, Bath Street, West Delagera Street, and West Ortega Street. I'll go through a few photos. Again, this is the residence. And the portion of the building that is within the interior setback, I'll show this on the site plan in a little bit, is the right corner of the building here, including the area where the chimney is. To the right here, just in the background, you can see the next-door neighbor's garage building, and then towards the left is a mixed-use property developed with a small corner market and other residential uses. This is that little corner store on the adjacent property. This is the other property that's abutting 711 Bath Street. So you'll see the garage in the foreground residential building, and they're buffered from the property by an existing driveway. This is a view across the street. And this is a view of the garage to the left, again, that was converted to a laundry room without a permit and will be returned to a garage. They have a short shed in the back that is proposed to be removed. It's not going to be relocated on the property, it's just going to be removed entirely. And this is a view towards the back of the property, towards Mission Creek. So the project is consistent with the zoning ordinance, either through compliance with the required standard or by requesting a modification for the standards that are not in compliance. I do want to point out, and again, I'll cover this in the site plan, all buildings on the project site are non-conforming to the interior setback. So for the existing building that is proposed to be converted to a short-term rental, the setback currently is three feet, 10.5 inches, and they are not proposing to do any changes with that, they're just proposing to convert the building. So you'll see here, this is on the left, blown-up version of the site plan. So this is the existing residence. You'll see a whole portion of the building is within the interior setback, so really that's the kitchen and living room space for the residence. The chimney is a little bit closer. And you'll also see to the left, this is the driveway access. Existing residence, square footage, 15 square feet net. All right. So the project site is in the RMH Zone, which is the Residential Multi-Unit and Hotel Zone. The purpose of that zoning district is to provide areas for multi-unit housing types and to allow hotels and similar establishments while protecting the existing housing stock, to preserve residential character of neighborhoods that are still predominantly residential, and to control activities of a retail, non-residential nature and those which would tend to be in harmonious with housing. All right. And then the zoning ordinance does include exceptions for a change of use in a setback for certain uses when closer than five feet to an interior lot line and adjacent to a residential use or zone. Really, what this includes within Title 30 of the zoning ordinance is exceptions for specific uses, including a community garden, live-work unit, market garden, neighborhood market. So that means is you are allowed to do a change of use within the setback to those particular types of uses. This is because, in general, these uses are restricted by specified standards, conditions, and criteria that will make the use more likely to be compatible with a residential neighborhood. However, because this particular project does not meet those exceptions, a modification was required. And that's what's being requested by the applicant. So the modifications to approve an interior setback modification, and this was presented to the staff hearing officer in consideration of the interior setback modification, is to have the modification be consistent with the general purposes of the zoning ordinance or the zoning district in which the project is located. And also, the modification must be found necessary to accomplish any one of the following, so again, only one of A through D, secure and appropriate improvement on the lot, prevent unreasonable hardship due to physical characteristics of the site or development or other circumstances. So this can include the topography, slope of the property, noise exposure, irregular property boundaries, proximity to creeks, or other unusual circumstances. Result in development generally consistent with existing development patterns for the neighborhood, or will promote uniformity of improvement to existing structures on the site, or construct housing containing affordable residential units. So this project was presented to the staff hearing officer first in January of 2024, and subsequently for a decision on February 7, 2024. Staff was not supportive of the interior setback modification and did recommend denial at both hearings. However, staff did also go over some potential characteristics of the site that do pose challenges with complying with the interior setback. So at the initial staff hearing officer meeting, the staff hearing officer asked questions related to lack of exterior improvements. Again, the project is limited, as far as the vacation rental goes, to just a conversion, so there's no other exterior changes being proposed with that. The applicant did note that that was not necessary, in their view, given that the floor plan was already adequate by their estimation, and the intent was to preserve the existing character of the building. The project was allowed, the project was continued to February 7, 2024, by the staff hearing officer. The reason behind that predominantly was to allow for communication with the rear tenant, as the applicant noted at the meeting that that had not occurred. And so the project was scheduled for February 7. At that hearing, the staff hearing officer denied the setback modification and was in agreement with staff's recommendation. So to the right, just really quickly, this building here is the building proposed to be converted to the vacation rental. This is the rear building behind that is proposed to remain as a residential unit, the garage, driveway, and this goes back towards Mission Creek. So the staff hearing officer, as I said, agreed with the staff's recommendation that the required findings could not be made to approve the change of use in the setback. The staff hearing officer noted concerns over the existing site conditions, lack of site improvements for the proposed change of use, and that the existing condition allows for potential unpermitted parking and lacks a clear separation or distinction between the residential unit at the back and proposed short-term rental, which lends itself to potential operational issues on-site. Additionally, the staff hearing officer did not agree that the modification was necessary to accomplish an appropriate improvement, because the current use, in their estimation, was appropriate for the zoning district. All right. So the project was subsequently appealed by the owner, Mr. Chase. In the appeal, and expanding on the original application letter submitted to the staff hearing officer, the appellant notes justification for the modification request that Unit 1 that is proposed to be converted is non-conforming. And as I previously said, all buildings on-site are non-conforming to the interior setback, but was constructed that way, as well as other buildings on the property, were the structures to have been constructed to meet the setback, the change of use would just be allowed in the RMH Zone. Additionally, the project is limited to a change of use for Unit 1. So again, the intent was to preserve the existing character that's on-site, as far as the building's relationship to the property and the public view from the public right-of-way. He also noted site constraints related to the building footprints of all existing buildings on-site, the driveway access to the garage, and proximity to Mission Creek at the rear. So this is a closer view of the project parcel. To the left is the site plan. So again, this is the building proposed to be converted, driveway access here, the residential building proposed to remain, the garage is here, Mission Creek is towards the back. And you'll see on the left, the top-of-bank setback, so from Mission Creek, there is a 25-foot setback that is to be respected. There can't be any buildings constructed beyond that top-of-bank setback, so that does limit some of the development potential on the property. In addition, you'll see the garage, non-conforming to the interior setback, as well as the second unit. So it is the case that were Unit 1 built to comply with the six-foot setback, the modification would not be applicable to change the use of the building from residential to non-residential. However, the modification is still required, because it does not meet one of the exceptions that were already expanded on in Title 30 of the zoning ordinance, and still needs to be evaluated to determine if the modification is consistent with the purposes of the zoning district and necessary, based on those, based on the findings that I presented earlier. So the site is adjacent to a property with, that is considered mixed use. It does predominantly have residential uses, however, it does have the corner market at the intersection of Bath here. And meeting the setback in terms of overall site conditions, there are challenges with meeting the setback. As I said, it's this portion of the building here that encroaches, and that's the living room kitchen area, so potential hardship is that removal of that area does pose challenges. They could pursue doing that, but they would have to demolish that portion that's encroaching. The other issue is the driveway access, so that represents the access to the garage towards the back, so the building cannot really be pushed towards that direction easily. And other on-site conditions, again, it's only the portion of the living room and kitchen, so while those are active spaces, it's unlikely that you'll have patrons of the short-term rental occupying this interior setback area, as well as the driveway buffer here to the right. So, let's see. In making the decision, the staff hearing officer stated that the modification, again, is not consistent with the purposes and intent of the setback to provide adequate buffering between the adjacent land use, and it doesn't meet the intent of the RMH zoning district to preserve a residential character of those neighborhoods that are still primarily residential and creates a conflict of uses. And the staff hearing officer also could not find it necessary to secure an appropriate improvement on the lot, again, because the use is already appropriate. I do want to also point out another challenge is the six-foot setback that's applied only pertains to conversion of the building from residential to non-residential use, and that were the owner to pursue an addition to the building that was non-residential or demolition completely and construction of a new building, they would be subject to a double setback. So instead of the six-foot setback, they would have to apply a 12-foot setback, which also limits the develop, the envelope of the property and where they could develop a building. Appeal issue number two was neighbor coordination. So as I mentioned, between the January meeting and the February meeting, when the decision to approve the interior setback modification was denied, the owner did note that correspondence occurred with the rear unit and as well with the adjacent neighbor. Both did not express opposition to the project. And so while correspondence was noted as requested, the staff hearing officer still did not find that the project adequately addressed the two uses on the site operationally or from a design standpoint, and did agree with staff's recommendation to deny the project. In terms of environmental review, the project does qualify for 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures, which allows for conversion of existing buildings from one use to another where only minor modifications are made to the exterior. And our recommendation today is to move to deny the appeal and uphold the staff hearing officer's denial of the modification, as identified in the resolution that was included in your packet. The options for the planning commission to consider is if the planning commission concurs with the staff hearing officer's denial, you can uphold the denial, as identified in the resolution. The planning commission also has the ability to amend or augment the findings as appropriate to support their decision. And alternatively, if the planning commission occurs, concurs with the appellant, the planning commission can uphold the appeal and approve the modification. In that case, the planning commission would need to state the reasons why the modification can be approved, so that would need to be based on the findings for the interior setback modification, and you can include conditions to support that decision. And also, if approving the modification, the planning commission would need to make the determination of exemption that the project qualifies for exemption from further environmental review under Secret Guidelines 15303. In that case, staff would return with a resolution approving the modification. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you. So next will be the appellant, which is also the applicant in this case. Not sure who's going to present, but please state your name for the record and your relationship to the project, and you will have 15 minutes for you to present the basis for your appeal.
Thank you. My name is David Chase. I'm one of the owners of the property. And the main applicant, thank you very much, Pilar, for your presentation. That was thorough and well done. And I would just want to start by saying thank you to you as well. I appreciate what you do as the commission, keeping Santa Barbara beautiful, and I really appreciate your time in reviewing our case, going to the site, and hearing us now. And it's worth stating that I've been a part of the construction community in Santa Barbara for over 20 years. We spend a lot of time improving properties around town, and we care very much about this city. We're locals. We want to make it more beautiful. We want to comply. We want to encourage the economy. And so, and we have actually had opportunity to do this in a lot of situations. In particular, of note is a property that we took out of receivership a few years ago that had over 300 violations. We repaired them all. We returned this three-building triplex back to the market with nine rentable rooms. We're currently under contract to do it again with a triplex for a customer to return three rentable properties to the market. And so, and along with that, we do lots, mostly residential improvements, so we care. And I just want to reiterate that we are under the impression that there's, we have the right to do this, because we're in the proper zone to do it. But beyond that, and more importantly, that we feel that this is good for this area and this neighborhood. There are a lot of reasons for that. We're already in a mixed-use area with that corner market. There are no other short-term rentals in this area, so we're not creating an unusual amount of that kind of business in this area. It's in a nice neighborhood. This is where people like to do short-term rentals, is neighborhoods like this. And it also, there are a lot of incentives to keep it really nice, right? We want to keep it looking nice. You went to the site, you saw it's well manicured. And we have done this before. We have another short-term rental that is legal, one of the few in Santa Barbara, under 1,000 square feet in a neighborhood nearby. And it's worth noting that we've had zero complaints from any neighbors, and in fact, we have had comments that it has improved the neighborhood. It's quieter. And our neighbors enjoy getting to use our property. We have fruit trees, avocado trees, this kind of thing, and we share that with them. So we try really hard to be good neighbors and to make it very, it's very important to us to keep the neighborhood nice and to respect the neighborhood, and particularly our direct neighbors. And in this case, I want to point out that Franco back here, sitting in the very back, he's our neighbor directly to the right on the property line at which we are talking about. And I have a letter from him in support of our request. He has been a great neighbor to us so far. He has been a great neighbor to us so far. And so we really appreciate him being here and support. We also got letters from the renters in the back. We've gotten two different letters because the renter has changed since we first started this process to now. And so we have two letters from them as well in support. And I want to point out that that was the main concern of the hearing officer previously. We got through the first hearing, and it almost looked like as if she was going to approve it. And then she asked the question, "Well, what does the back renter think?" And I hadn't thought to talk to them about that because they can be somewhat transient, whereas Franco is not. And so she basically said, "Well, why don't you talk to the renter and come back to me?" So that's what we did. We talked to them. We got a letter. And then we went a little farther, and we talked to Franco and made sure he was okay with it, made sure he got the letter that this development was being asked for. And so we came back with those letters, thinking we would have given her what she wanted, and she would say yes. And instead, she went down a different road, and it wasn't good enough. So that was... That took us back because we thought we were in a good place. As Polaris already stated, we're in the right zone. The site itself doing this is not going to create any kind of hardship to anyone. It's not going to create any safety problems. It's actually, we believe, is going to improve the neighborhood. And I also want to restate the site constraints. We are in the creek. There's 50 feet of our property we can't develop. Polaris also pointed out that if we were to demo and build something new and change the use, we would lose a ton of real estate. And we also have the driveways on both sides, and they're not going anywhere. And so it's... And plus, the hardship of having to do construction to try to comply, it would shrink an already small house, less than 1,000 square feet, even smaller. That would be extremely expensive. It would be a hardship on our community. Construction is hard. I know that and how it affects the community and the neighbors and the environment, the unnecessary use of resources and the impact to the environment. It just seems unnecessary, given what you've seen. And obviously, moving the house would be a tremendous hardship as well. So there really seems to be no reason in our minds why this isn't an approvable modification, given what we're asking to do. Yeah, and I think, again, I want to restate that we're really concerned about the neighborhood, maintaining the neighborhood, and doing what we can to be good neighbors. We are locals. We live here, and we care. So I think that's important. I don't know, Daniel, or do you have anything else you want to state? Okay. Thank you very much. I really appreciate you hearing us.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. And Ms. Johnson, how much time does he have left? If you'd like to use it later?
Thank you, Chair Baughy. He has 9 minutes and 2 seconds left.
Okay. Well, note that for the record and move on to comments from the public. Do we have any members of the public who have handed in speaker slips or have approached you on Zoom?
Thank you, Chair Baughy. At this time, I haven't received any speaker slips. But if you do wish to speak in person, you can fill out a speaker slip at the back of the room. I'm not seeing any movement. We also do not have any virtual participants at this time. We also did not receive any written correspondence for this item. So I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Baughy.
Okay, thank you. So we can now close the general public comment period on this item and move to the commission. We'll start off the question period. Who would like to go first? Commissioner Boss.
Thank you, Chair Baughy. I'll start with questions for staff, and then I think I'll have a few for applicant and appellant as well, just to save you a couple steps. So I wanted to... A few questions. So first, if the denial is upheld, there are a number of enforcement violations at the site. What is the pathway to still addressing the enforcement violations?
Through the chair, Commissioner Boss. So the enforcement case is still in process. That's irrespective of this interior setback modification. So they would need to address that either way.
And my understanding from some of the documents in our packet was that permits needed to be, I think, acquired or in process as of last July. So is there a deadline for that to move forward?
Through the chair, Commissioner Boss. In terms of addressing the enforcement case, yes, they have to do it timely. They need to show that they're moving forward with addressing those violations. So right now, it's built into this project that they would be addressing that. Yeah, were this project not to move forward, those timelines would be reassessed with the enforcement officer. And yeah, it would be probably a different date than that. Yeah.
Thank you. And then another question, I think this was in our packet on pages 5 and 6. Modifications granted on a case-by-case basis. There were a number of exceptions, and my understanding was that the proposed use does not meet one of the exceptions. So I'm trying to find... I'm trying to understand how we could make the findings. My reading is that we cannot make the findings, so we needed to uphold the denial.
So through the chair, Commissioner Boss. So those exceptions and what I presented in the change-of-use setback slide, actually, if we can...
Slide 15, I think.
Go back to that. Thank you. So what that was intended to relay is that Title 30 of the city's zoning ordinance includes exceptions to non-conforming buildings that would allow you to do a change-of-use from residential to non-residential without requiring a zoning modification. So were this building proposed to go from residential to, say, a live-work unit, they potentially would not need an interior setback modification. But these types of uses do have other criteria that they need to meet. For example, live-work units have a cap of 1,000 square feet. There's other limitations that tend to make those uses more appropriate with other residential development. That's why they were included as exceptions. But because this specific project is a short-term rental, not one of those listed items, it needs the modification. So that doesn't mean you can't, you know, approve the modification or deny the modification. We would look at the findings at that point, and that's where we're at with this one. Yeah.
Understood. Thank you. And then if the modification was approved and the project were to move forward as presented in the application, would they be able to also change the use of the other units on the parcel? So if this... If it was approved, as is, it would be just the front would be a short-term rental and the back would be residential. But could they come back? Or what would be the process for them making the entire property a short-term rental?
Yeah, there's always the potential for someone to redevelop other buildings on the property. We would look at those at that time. I would just point out again, the other buildings are non-conforming to the setbacks as well. So yeah, I think we would look at that independently at that time. Yeah.
Great, thank you. And then a few questions for the applicant. So I'll start just by asking you the same question about the enforcement issue. So I understand it's included in this application process. But if the denial were upheld, can you tell us about your process for still addressing the enforcement violations or the plans that you have?
Yeah, we would move forward with returning the garage to a garage. We'd take basically the laundry out.
Great, thank you.
It is interesting to note, too, that I found in the street file a permit from 1935 where they... to put electricity in the garage. So that actually is already been permitted, but quite some time ago.
Great, thank you. And I'm trying to get a better understanding of the current uses of the property. So can you tell me how long tenants or how many tenants have been in each of the buildings over the past year?
I don't have that good information for you because we have a management company that does that for us. But we've had long-term renters in the back unit for a while. We've not been using the front unit as much, just to keep it clear for this process. And so we're... Yeah, I don't actually have good information for you about that. Yeah, sorry.
Okay. I think most of my questions were along that line of just understanding when the letter was... I started communication with the tenant was requested earlier this year by the staff hearing officer. There was a letter submitted from the current tenant, but then a month later, it was a new tenant.
That's right.
And so is there also a new tenant now?
No, I'm pretty sure the most current letter is a tenant that's still there.
Okay, so they've been there probably two months?
Yeah, they've been there for a while, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I think those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, Commissioner DeLucio.
Thank you. I think my questions may piggyback on yours a little bit, Commissioner Boss. Maybe the applicant can answer this, if you want to. Can I ask the applicant some questions? So maybe we need to put a slide up. There's modifications. There's four modifications. I'm trying to figure out, you're coming... You're asking for a modification, but so far, you haven't articulated what is your basis for the modification. Of these four things to the left, do any of these, in your opinion, fit into justifying a modification?
Well, B would be a hardship to comply with the current setback. We'd have to either cut part of the house off or move the house. And that's... That would be a hardship to do that. And there are several site constraints that make that harder and so forth and so on. And it would be impossible, actually, because, as Polaris pointed out, we'd have to move it 12 feet off of the park, and then it would be impossible.
Okay. My other question is... Forget my other question now. I'm going to ask staff. I have a question for staff right now. It says A is to secure an appropriate improvement on a lot. What are... What is, in your opinion, what was that? I mean, this probably developed a long time ago, these ordinance. But what do you think that means applies to? And I ask because short-term rentals are permitted in this zone.
Thank you for the question. So through the chair, Commissioner DeLucio. So the modification, yes, it needs to be found necessary to accomplish one of the things. A is a little bit subjective as an appropriate improvement. As I said, the staff hearing officer noted that the existing use is appropriate for the zone, right? Because it's residential, it's in the residential multi-unit housing, residential multi-unit hotel zone, so that use is already appropriate. I mean, potentially, you could say that hotels are appropriate for the zone. I think the issue was that the zone also states that we want to preserve residential in areas that are predominantly residential currently. So, you know, hotels are allowed in the zone, yes. That would be up to the planning commission whether you think that is sufficient to say it's appropriate.
Thank you. I think you've answered my question. I have one more question for the applicant, please. I have one more question, please. Thank you. I know that you're asking for a modification for the front. How come at this... Had you considered asking for a modification for the front and the back at the same time?
Yeah, the reason we didn't do that is there's a... As far as I understand it, and Polaris will understand better, 1,000 square feet, when you want to convert more than 1,000 square feet, then it becomes a totally different process with both zoning and building. And so we didn't want it... That's a much bigger, much, much more complicated and expensive process. And so because we had success with this before converting less than 1,000 square feet, that's why we're pushing it that way. This seemed reasonable. It seemed doable, and it seemed approvable.
Okay, thank you. And one final question. Are we talking 1,000 square feet combined of the two units?
Through the chair, Commissioner DeLucio. So the front building is approximately 800 square feet. Cumulatively, if you were to include the back unit, that's 1,400 square feet. So then, once you're over 1,000 square feet, the project, what are you speaking about, is it would require a development plan?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, next is Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For Mr. Chase, yes. It's me, right here. You mentioned the square footage of the short-term vacation rental you currently have, and I didn't quite catch it.
It's less than 1,000 square feet. It's like 900 something.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Okay, Commissioner Wiskom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of questions, first for Ms. Plummer and then get to Mr. Chase. Slide 14, I think it was 14. I didn't... Yeah, okay. So the language here, allow hotels and similar establishments while protecting existing housing stock. Does that actually exist in the definition, or where does that language come from? And then, Ms. Plummer, on another one, on slide 18. Oh, I think that's in the preserve residential character in neighborhoods that are primarily residential. So just... I'm trying to get it... Is this language that's actually in a document that we have?
Through the chair, Commissioner Wiskom. This is the direct language for the purpose of the zone.
Okay, so it does say while protecting existing housing stock.
That's correct.
Okay, great. That's good to know. Thank you. And then, let's see. What is the status on the violations in terms of, do you have dates when they need to be corrected, no matter what we decide here today?
Through the chair, Commissioner... Unfortunately, I don't have the exact date for the enforcement case to be addressed. I don't have that exact date.
And if it's not addressed by whatever X date that is, then are there fines that are imposed?
Chair Baughy, Commissioner Wiskom. Yeah, so it goes through the enforcement program. If there could be fines if they're not working towards getting the violations corrected. And then ultimately, if it weren't corrected, then it would come to the city attorney's office.
Okay, so it has to... It goes through a due diligence process. Yeah, okay. That's good to know. Thank you for that. And then, Mr. Chase, I had a question for you. A couple of questions. First, the unit that you want to convert to STVR, are you planning on renting it as one entity with two bedrooms?
Yes.
So you're not planning on offering each bedroom with shared living?
No.
Okay, okay. And you mentioned that you bought a property that was in receivership with over, I think you said, over 300 violations.
Yes.
Okay, so my question for you is when we visited this site the first time, and we... One of the commissioners asked about the violations and when they occurred. And they occurred after you bought the property.
Correct.
Okay, so you went ahead without permits to do the work? And so can you explain to me the... That thought process? Because I'm having trouble with that, actually.
Yeah. We wanted a place to put some laundry machines, and there wasn't another really good place for it. And so without permits, we went ahead and put plumbing in. And so that was wrong. We shouldn't have done it, and so we want to correct that.
Okay, and then we're... You have... So the plumbing and electrical violations refer to the garage?
To the garage. That's right. And just to, again, to reiterate, there was electrical, and that was previously permitted.
Right. You had said that, yeah, although it's knob and tube or something, right?
Who knows?
Yeah. Okay, okay. Well, that clears that up. I really appreciate that. Thank you for that. And I think... Let me just make sure I don't have any other questions. Oh, I guess one other question. So Unit Number 2, does that have two... The back unit that you rent? Does that have two renters?
It's going to be... It's one unit, yeah. It's one unit. There are... I'm not sure how many people are staying there right now. I think at least three in that unit, yeah.
Okay, so... But it's just one lease or one?
Yes, it's one lease, yes.
Okay, because there's two entrances with, it looks like, possibly different lock codes on them.
You bring up a good point. So we inherited... We purchased this property from Dario Pini, and that was the other property that we took out of receivership as well. And this property had, I think, over 200 violations when we purchased it. So when we first acquired it, we inherited a lot of what you see there, but we improved it quite a bit. And we removed a whole section of building. He had connected the two with a cobbled-together building that wasn't... Had no foundation and so forth. So anyway, we cleaned that all up, repaired all the violations, and we were finalled back then. So that's why you see it the way it is. And that wasn't a violation, having those two entrances.
Right. It was just more a curiosity thing of, you know, what's really going to happen with that back unit? So, and are we... Is there a way, Ms. Ostringer, of... I don't even know how to say this, of ensuring that the back unit remains a residential unit and does not get illegally converted to an STVR? An enforceable legal... An enforceable legal way?
Chair Bauckey, Commissioner Wiscombe, I can't really think of one, because it is allowed in that zone. So, if they, if they were caught with an illegal STVR there, then our office has a rigorous enforcement program, so.
Right. Which is very successful from, yeah. Okay. Okay, good. I think that's all my questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wiscombe. Commissioner Lodge, your light's on. Do you have another question? No? Okay, okay. So, I have no questions. So, does anybody want to start the discussion? And if the applicant, you have nine minutes left, if you have anything else to say, this would be the time.
I don't know how much this matters, but in the street file as well, from back from 1925, I found a plot map or a site map that actually shows that side yard setback at 10 feet, which, again, this is back in 1925, this is hand drawn, so I understand, that's not the same as a survey today. But it also shows that the driveway five feet smaller. So, it almost looks as if at some point, someone thought these property lines were five feet in the direction of the top side of our property. So, that would, if that were true, our property, this house was built originally with a 10-foot setback on the side that were currently under review. So, I thought that was interesting, if nothing else. That's it.
Thank you. We'll start our deliberations with Commissioner Boss.
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. I'm really struggling to make the findings that this project, or the findings that must be made to approve a setback modification. I couldn't find that it was necessary to secure an appropriate improvement, especially because that there's existing, the existing use is appropriate for the zone. I couldn't find, it's necessary to prevent unreasonable hardship. The appellant letter didn't make the case for hardship, and the presentation did not either. And I couldn't make the finding that it would result in the development that is generally consistent with the existing patterns of development for the neighborhood, especially because the zone aims to protect the existing housing stock. As Commissioner Wiscombe noted, there were violations prior to the current owner, and the current owner added to the list of violations. And further, I'm concerned that it's currently being used as a short-term rental, based on the two site visits I participated in, and really my own Google searches of the area. So, I'm leaning towards agreeing with staff's recommendation to deny the project as proposed and uphold the staff hearing officer decision.
Okay, next, Commissioner DeLucio.
Okay. City Attorney, please cut me off if I say something I shouldn't be saying. First of all, I don't, I agree with Commissioner Boss, we can't make the findings today. I mean, I don't think the applicant did a very good job of trying to make the findings. Looking at the findings here, you know, it's, I didn't see you articulate anything in here that would convince me that we should approve the modification. So, I'm leaning right now toward, obviously, upholding the staffing, hearing officers' determination. However, I'm a little disturbed. I think you, actually, disturbed because I actually have, I alluded to that I did do another site visit myself. And the reason I did the site visit was that I did see two cleaning women going up the driveway, and I sort of followed them. And the room that the shed is actually being used to store linens and towels, and the rooms were open, those two rooms were open, and they were being cleaned. So, that, to me, suggests that they are being used currently for short-term rentals, and that's why I asked the question, why didn't you apply for a hard, to convert the whole entire property to short-term rentals? So, that's why I did ask that question, wanted to give you the opportunity. So, those are my comments at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Lodge.
I also concur with Commissioner Boss. No way that I could find hardship, or that it's necessary to accomplish securing an appropriate improvement on the lot. What's there is perfectly fine. And as housing for families, it is far more needed for a family, for a long-term rental, that is far more needed in this community than more facilities for tourists. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Wardlow.
Thank you. I concur with my fellow colleagues. I will be supporting staff's recommendation to deny the appeal, as I cannot make the findings. I would agree that there has not been evidence provided that would say that this could prevent unreasonable hardship. There would be no modification required if this property were to continue to be a normal rental unit for the residents of Santa Barbara, which, above all else, is the priority for this zone and the city at large, as well as the fact that the other four, or the other three examples that you could note to make the findings on this, I feel that this would actually do the opposite of those things. I do not think that this is an appropriate improvement on a lot, to convert this from residential rentals to a short-term rental, nor do I think that it will be more consistent with the development patterns of this neighborhood. And obviously, number D, constructive housing development containing affordable residential units, creating more short-term rentals does not create more affordable housing in our community. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I concur with all the commissioner's comments. Oh, no, I forgot you. Okay, Commissioner Wiscombe, you can go before, but.
You missed me.
Yeah, sorry.
I don't know. I, I find this to be a very hard decision. There's property rights issues involved, and there is zoning here that would allow this use. But I also, we also have to deal with the findings we have in front of us, and those aren't going to change. And I have to agree with Commissioner Boss that I just can't make these findings, and to any one of the following, I can't make any one of the following of the four of them to move this, to move this along. So, I'll be, I'll be supporting staff's recommendation to deny the appeal. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Barnwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I'm on the other side, for a variety of reasons. If it weren't for the violation of the setback, this would be a go.
Correct.
And I want to review for everybody where the setback regulations started. They began when the United States began to set up single-family homes, not downtown city structures made out of brick, which are built next to one another and have no setback. But, single-family homes were being built, and the issue was fire, the transference of fire from one cottage to another cottage. That was the original reason for setbacks. The city of Santa Barbara has building code provisions for that, which are to require a two-hour fire-resistant wall. So, you can violate the code, excuse me, you can violate that setback in a couple of occasions, one of which I am familiar with, having done carpentry on that job. So, it seems to me as if we were to request of the applicant, also, another thing is, it's an old, I hate to go so deep into the carpentry of this, but I think this is a carpentry issue. I mean, if he chopped it off, we'd say, okay. So, the alternative is to build a fire-resistant wall, to take off the siding and put up a two-hour fire-resistant wall. And not only that, but to put in some sheer panels to protect it even more against earthquake. If we were to make a request like that of the applicant, in my personal opinion, all of the concerns associated with violating the setback have been wiped away. I also want to add, insofar as making the findings, I want to talk about the definitions. When we say that this is non-residential, that isn't the term that's used in, that is not the professional term that's used in general discussion of land use. It's called multi-residential, or hotel residential, but not non-residential. So, it confuses the discussion when we use that term, non-residential. I also want to talk about the code, or the documents in front of us, referring to the loss of housing slash housing stock. The phrase comes up in a couple of different ways. We don't, this is, this is huge. We don't lose the housing. We're not losing the housing. We are losing the use, but not the house. And I think we should focus on the fact that nowhere in this is he saying he wants to put something else up there. It's still a house. What we're, what he's asking for is a change in use. So, I can find that, I can make the findings quite easily that we're not losing housing stock. Indeed, if he were to sell it to someone else, they could turn it back into a house, because we're talking about the use, not the structure, not the building structure. Also, it's so consistent with the city's policies of architectural consistency in a neighborhood. He's not changing the street frontage at all. We already have a little ABU next door, so it seems like these small, little residential units are no big deal along that street. The city has a very stated policy of removing illegal vacancy units. This is an attempt to put in a legal one, which I applaud. Also, another thing that's being lost in this discussion is, there's a contribution to the TOT. And I know that the council has repeatedly said that they want to support housing of any type that contributes to the TOT. So, my own findings with that would be that it's, because it is not a loss of the house, it's only a change in use, I can find that it's completely consistent with maintaining the housing stock. It's consistent with maintaining the architectural style and conformity of the neighborhood. I think if a traffic study were, this is sidebar, but if a traffic study were done, I would imagine that the number of car travels would be far less for a vacancy unit, so probably the demand on the street is even less. So, I think, I think the use of our words and how we've defined them has caused this entire discussion to go down a wrong path. I'd be quite happy if he met the health and safety issues associated with a two-hour fire-resistant wall and put up some sheer paneling, and we collected TOT, and it didn't change the street frontage at all, and the house is still there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Boss.
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. I want to clarify that if something is currently a housing unit, and the use is changed to not a housing unit, meaning a short-term rental, a hotel room, a short-term rental is not housing. The physical structure remains the same, but the use of that site will change. So, it will be removing it from the housing stock. And right now, from the observations and comments, it's also, it's not being used as housing. So, that's double concern. But, if you're changing a use from housing to something else, it's no longer part of our housing stock.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Barnwell.
Just one small point, excuse me, just one small point. The housing use has not been lost. It remains in limbo, and if the property owner sells it to someone else, the housing use can be resurrected. So, we're talking about a temporary, not a permanent, change. If the housing, if the use, as you just said, were to be permanent, then I would say you're absolutely right. But it isn't. A change of ownership would change this use right back to a house. And that's my point on it. Okay?
Steph, Megan, you had a comment?
Chair Bauckey, I just want to clarify for the commission that the use change would be permanent until another permit to come in to convert it to residential. So, for the purposes of the city, should a residential unit be converted to a hotel use, that is a permanent change. They have to comply with building code requirements for that use, occupancy requirements, fire requirements, accessibility, et cetera, which is usually the hurdle for short-term rental conversions. Should an applicant or owner want to come back in the future and revert back to residential use, they would have to do so with a permit again, and they would have to comply with current residential standards, both for planning and for building code at that time. So, just to be clear, that although there is a mechanism to come back and permit it again to residential unit, it would require those approvals.
Okay. I think we're done our deliberations. Any commissioner want to make a motion?
I'll move that we deny the appeal and uphold the staff hearing officer's denial of the modification.
I'll second.
First and second, can we have a roll call vote?
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. I'll take roll call vote. Commissioner DeLucio?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
No.
Commissioner Wiscombe?
Yes.
Commissioner Boss?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wardlow?
Yes.
Chair Bauckey?
Yes.
Motion passes with a six-one vote.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Plummer, for bringing this item to us. Move on to the next item, which is a new item, which is 1269 Farrell Road. The purpose of this planning commission hearing is to consider the appeal of Rose Willis of the Single Family Design Board's final approval on the project. Before we get started.
You need to announce the appeal period. On the other.
Oh, yes, you have a 10-day appeal period on the prior item. Sorry for skipping that. So, before we get started, do any of my commissioners have any ex-party communications that they need to disclose on Farrell Road?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to note that although I unfortunately could not make the site visit, I did go up and visit the site on my own.
Okay, so, we'll start with a staff presentation. We have project planner Ted Hamilton-Roll here to make the staff presentation, and whenever you're ready, Mr. Hamilton-Roll, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Bauckey and commissioners. I'm joined by Sebastian Herricks, Assistant Planner. Today, we're here for you to consider the appeal of the Single Family Design Board's decision to grant final approval for development at 1269 Farrell Road. Your purview for today's appeal hearing is limited. The standard of review in your decision will be whether the plans that were granted final approval by SFB are in substantial conformance with the plans that were granted project design approval. The municipal code and SFB guidelines do not include a definition of substantial conformance, therefore, staff and the design review bodies rely on the common definition and meaning of the term. To conform means to be similar or identical, and substantial means being largely but not wholly that which is specified. Therefore, a project that is in substantial conformance to a previous approval is largely similar to that previous approval. When staff and the design review bodies evaluate whether a project substantially conforms to a prior approval, we look at the whole project, from the big-picture site layout down to the architectural details. A project submitted for final approval that is several feet taller than the design-granted project design approval, or that has major changes to the building massing, or a different architectural style, or site layout, would not substantially conform and would not be eligible for final approval. We wouldn't even put it on an agenda. A project with those types of major changes would have to return to design review for a revised project design approval. This project proposes to substantially redevelop the existing non-conforming single-family residence, and to construct a new conforming three-story single-family residence with an attached garage. The project includes associated site work and landscaping and the removal of three To the left is a vicinity map of the project location, and to the right is an aerial view. The project site is located below Alameda Padre Sara in the Lower Riviera neighborhood. The parcel is about .23 acres, and it has an average slope of 29%. And it's own single-unit residential, and is located in the Hillside Design District. Here are the elevations of the existing and proposed residents. I'm going to fly through these drawings, and feel free to ask to return to them later. Note, these elevations have not been overlaid or arranged to scale with each other, but I have tried to arrange them so that the sizing is somewhat similar. This is the north elevation of the existing residents and of the proposed residents. For the proposed residents, the garage is this massing up here, and that is the third story. Here's the west elevation. The street is up here on the left, and this is the garage. This is the south elevation, as you might see it from down below. And here's the east elevation, and again, the street is over here to the right. The appellant identifies three appeal points. The first is that a quorum was not present to vote on the motion to grant final approval made at the April 8th SFB consent hearing. The second is that the project does not substantially conform to the findings that The second is that the project does not substantially conform to the findings that were made as part of S F D B's decision to grant project design approval. The third is that the project did not meet S F D B's conditions of approval that were made at project design approval and reiterated by city council on appeal. Before we get into the project's history, here's a quick refresher on the phases of design review. Concept review is the first level of review. Applicants are encouraged to present sketches or conceptual drawings, and the board responds to broad issues such as site planning, general architectural style, and the project's relationship to its site and surroundings. Project design approval, this is the most important approval, determines the site plan configuration, project size, bulk and scale, and a design style that must be followed in the working drawings. All significant elements of the architectural appearance, landscape, site, and building orientation must be provided at project design approval. Final approval is the review of working construction drawings, including details. All exterior details, color samples, doors and window specs, lighting and lighting fixtures must be included for review. Final approval plans must be in substantial conformance with the plans given project design approval in order to be approved. And again, final approval is the decision that's being appealed. The project was reviewed at a total of nine public hearings over the course of 18 months, including today's appeal hearing. The first concept review was in September 2022, after which the owner voluntarily installed story polls. The second concept review was in December 2022. At both concept hearings, the S F D B requested the project be studied in response to design, privacy, and neighborhood compatibility concerns, and to address comments from the board. In response, the applicant modified the proposed project each time the project returned to the board and addressed issues including height, maximum floor area, project siting, landscaping, and massing. The S F D B granted project design approval in January of 2023, and that decision was subsequently appealed to city council by the neighbors. The appeal was denied at the April 11th, 2023 city council hearing. Following the appeal hearing, the project returned to full board for final approval in October 2023. At that hearing, the project had to be continued because the removal of setback trees had not yet been granted by the Parks and Recreation Department. The S F D B also had additional comments on the project's height and clarifications, but felt that most of the details had been ironed out at that point, so they continued the project to consent for final approval as they didn't feel that it warranted another full-board hearing. Following the October 2023 hearing, the project went to a street tree advisory committee and the Parks and Recreation Commission for approval of those three setback trees. And the most recent public hearing was final approval on consent on April 8th, 2024. At that hearing, Board Member Graffiti was the designated consent reviewer, and she determined that the final design plans were in substantial conformance with the project design approval plans and the conditions applied by city council. Board Member Graffiti's decision was then ratified at the full-board hearing later the same day, solidifying the decision and initiating the 10-day appeal period. Board Member Graffiti is here to assist with questions from the commission if needed. The first appeal issue raised by the appellant states that a quorum of S F D B members was not present for the April 8th S F D B consent hearing when final approval was granted. This is not entirely accurate. Per S F D B guidelines, only one S F D B member is required for quorum at consent hearings, and the consent reviewer's decision is required to be reviewed and ratified by the full board at the next regular full-board hearing. In this project's case, the consent reviewer granted final approval, and that decision was ratified at the regular full-board hearing later the same day. Therefore, the project was approved in accordance with the city's policies and procedures. The second appeal issue is that the project does not substantially conform to the findings the board made as part of the project design approval. Specifically, the appellant raises three findings they believe are not met. First, the project effectively reads as one story from Farrell Road. Second, the project is compatible with the neighborhood and its size, bulk, and scale is appropriate to the site and neighborhood. And third, the development preserves significant public scenic views of and from the hillside. As a reminder, to reopen the findings S F D B made at project design approval is not within the scope of a final approval appeal. If the project size, bulk, or massing had changed significantly between project design approval and final approval, then these findings could potentially be reexamined. Between project design approval and final approval, the project size did not change significantly. There is an increase in 58 net square feet from 3,348 net square feet to 3,406 net square feet that resulted from interior floor plan changes, and with that went an increase in the F A R by one percentage point from 84 to 85%. The F A R at 85% of maximum allowable complies with S F D B's October 2023 directive to keep the F A R at 85% or less. I'll run through a brief comparison between the project design approval and final approval plans. Note the red hatched areas on the project design approval plans on the left are areas where proposed massing was removed as a result of S F D B comments during conceptual review. And again, these are not compared to scale. Here's the site plan. The east elevation. Note the massing that was removed prior to P D A on top of the garage area. North elevation. And the south elevation. In these plan sheets, there's no increase in height, significant rearrangement of building massing, major site layout changes, or architectural style changes that would have precluded S F D B's granting of final approval. The third appeal issue is that the project failed to meet the conditions of approval applied by S F D B at project design approval and reiterated by city council at the project design approval appeal hearing. The condition of approval is in question is the height of the proposed residence, which S F D B and city council requested to be lowered by one foot at the second-floor plate. At the subsequent final approval hearing, final approval was continued with the comment that the applicant shall lower the overall height of the residence by one foot, and this was a clarification made to the directive to lower the second-floor plate height. In response, the applicant reduced the overall height of the residence by approximately one and a half feet, using a combination of raising the first floor, finished floor, and lowering the roof. I'll leave it to the applicant to explain the details on that. The result was that the S F D B consent reviewer found the plans to substantially conform with the project design approval plans and recognized that this condition of approval had been met. Here's the west elevation as approved for project design approval. The overall height, as shown from the lowest finished floor, which is about at this level where my cursor is, or the bottom of this red arrow, to the top of the roof, right here, is about 34 feet, eight and a half inches. This was the height measurement that S F D B directed the applicant to reduce. Here's the same elevation, whoops. Here's the same elevation as approved for final approval. The roof height was lowered by approximately six inches, and the lowest finished floor was raised by about a foot, resulting in a height reduction of approximately one and a half feet from 34 feet, eight inches to 33 feet, one inch. At the April 8th final approval hearing, S F D B found this height reduction to comply with their condition of approval as reiterated by city council to reduce the height of the residence by one foot. Moreover, the size, bulk, and scale and massing remain virtually unchanged between project design approval and final approval. Now, as a point of clarification, the overall height as shown in this and the previous slide is not how height is measured per the Santa Barbara Municipal Code. This overall height dimension was used to give a definitive reference point for S F D B's motion to reduce the project height. Pursuant to Santa Barbara Municipal Code Title 30, building height is measured from the top of the roof on a warped plane to all points where existing or finished grade contacts the exterior of the building below. Here's a diagram of straight from the code on the right, and here's the west elevation again. At the west elevation, the proposed residence is approximately 24 feet, eight inches tall as measured per the municipal code. As part of application completeness review before project design approval, staff verified that the project does not exceed the municipal code's height limit of 30 feet for single-unit residences. The slide shows, this slide shows the 30-foot height limit as a warped plane 30 feet above grade. The building rendering shows the design and building height as approved for project design approval, and as we discussed, the building height was further reduced for final Again, the standard of today's review is whether the final approval plans are in substantial conformance to the project design approval plans. Staff's opinion is that the applicant's final approval plans are in substantial conformance with the plans given project design approval by S F D B and the conditions applied by city council on April 11th, 2023. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission deny the appeal and uphold S F D B's granting of final approval. If the commission concurs with S F D B's approval and staff's recommendation, then the commission may deny the appeal and make the findings for final approval that the project plans are in substantial conformance with the plans granted project design approval and the conditions applied by city council, Resolution Number 23-101. If the commission concurs with the appellant's, then the commission may uphold the appeal and deny final approval. If you uphold the appeal, you must state why the final approval plans are not in substantial conformance with the project design approval plans and not consistent with city council's resolution. In addition, please provide clear directions to the applicant, S F D B, as to what actions or planned revisions are necessary to find the project in substantial conformance with the project design approval decision. That concludes my presentation. We are available for questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton-Roll. Next, we're going to have the appellant. The appellant has 15 minutes. Please, when you come up to the podium, state your name and your relationship to the project. And you can start the timer now, whenever you're ready.
Let me plug in first.
Yeah, as soon as you're ready.
Also, excuse me, point of clarification. Ted, you can remember that you and I had a phone conversation at the end of last week where you were very explicit that we would have 20 minutes. You remember that conversation? Because I remember it quite clearly and communicated it to Rose about five minutes thereafter.
Mr. Booth, I do recall that. That could be a misunderstanding on my part. You may ask the chair for additional time if you like.
The current presentation is slightly under 15 minutes, but if there are follow-up questions that arise that would give us value in responding, I would respectfully ask that we get a few extra minutes to do so.
I have no problem giving you the 20 minutes you have requested.
Marvelous. Thank you very much. Let me get my presentation started and make sure that we are actually, whoops. And we're good.
Yeah, please state your name for the record.
Absolutely. My name is Derek Booth. I'm not an architect. I'm not a lawyer. I am a professional licensed civil engineer. I am a professor at UCSB, but I'm here today on behalf of the neighbors, of which we have over a dozen, and on behalf of Rose Willis, who is the applicant. And they've asked me to speak about this project. There are only two issues that we're going to raise with you today in this presentation. First, the current project has not met the additional requirements, and with all respect to the staff, it is not in substantial conformation with what was in the P D A, and I'll walk you through that to, to show that. But first, I would just like to, to point out the level of review that was given at final approval of this project. The project was moved, seconded, and approved by a single member. There was no staff report. There was no supporting documentation, and it's probably worth listening to the...
Last item was the 1269 Farrell Road. Was to make sure the final approval, the final plan substantially conformed with P D A, which I found it did, and then provided the following comments. Yep, that looks accurate to me.
That's it. 27 seconds. No discussion, no follow-up. So let's now move to the first point of appeal. The current project has not met the additional requirements of the board, and I'd like to walk you through that. Here was what was said as the condition on the January 2023 preliminary design approval comment, reduce the second-floor plate height. And it's worth listening now to the discussions at the October 23 on this very topic.
I don't see any changes there from the previous middle. So can you confirm that? I mean, you manipulated the dimensions, clarified that, but the plate height didn't change what we asked, correct?
Yeah. You want to take that one? Yeah, we, we didn't manipulate any dimensions. The dimensions are clearly shown and accurate, so I just want to dispel any notion that we're trying to do, do some like shell game with dimensions, where our dimensions, I think, are very clear. And no, we have not changed plate height, floor to ceiling height since the last time you saw it.
Let's move on to one other.
Stantiate. I would imagine that in that context, the intent was for that floor level to be reduced by a foot. Has it been reduced?
Well...
Just an answer. Just an answer.
With all due respect, I would disagree that it's a semantical issue. It's a technical issue, and yourself as an architect and myself as an architect, we know what plate height means, and we double-checked to make sure that our...
Did you look back at the video or did you just read the meeting minutes, Mr. Weber?
We didn't just read the minutes, meeting minutes. We also verified with staff.
Listen, this has been an emotional topic. This has been an emotional meeting. I get emotional because I'm having to mediate between everybody. So there's a very real possibility that when I made this motion, I said plate height rather than floor-to-floor height. I could have made a mistake because I'm human, but the intent, and I have been in on this project for two years, just like you, was that this floor height be reduced. I recall clearly. My answer, my question to you is a very simple one. Has it been reduced?
I heard your question. You already asked that question during this hearing, and I answered that question.
Answer it again, please.
The plate height has not been reduced.
Thank you.
I don't know what your intent was. That's why we double-checked. We have to, we have to have some reliable minutes to base our response off of them.
Stantiate.
So hold that thought. Reliable minutes to base our response off of. So here are the minutes from that meeting. We presume they are now reliable minutes, and the board said exactly what they meant. They meant a reduction of one foot, zero inches in the overall height of the residence. And surely the design board is familiar with the terms of 3015090 defining building height, and if that's what they meant, that's what they would have said. They didn't say that. They said reduce the height of the building, because frankly, who cares if the building is raised from the backside? The issue is the height of the building from public views on the street. So let's now actually walk through what happened. Here's the elevation. This is all taken off of their plans. I've just made the numbers bigger so we all can read them. Here's the January 2023. Now we show up at the final design hearing in October. You'll see it was lowered by one-eighth of an inch, and so you can probably understand why the board was a little dismayed at that response. And now here we are in April 2024, and as staff says, it's come down about six inches. But again, I remind you what the board said in their reliable minutes. Reduce the overall height of the residence by one foot, and that simply hasn't happened. Here's another way of looking at it. This is the overlay, which was not provided, of the existing house, roof line in blue, the upper, the proposed house, again, over seven feet higher than the existing roof line. We can't even talk about how the preliminary design approval thought that somehow this would read as one story from Farrell Road, but we certainly can say every inch matters here. It's not six inches, it's a foot, because it was a requirement of final approval, and that's what should be provided in the final plans. And thus far, it has not happened. Okay, let's move on. Well, no, actually, let's say one more thing. On the staff report... On the staff report, this is the written staff report that we received before this meeting. I have to raise one point. These changes were discussed during the final approval hearing. They were not discussed. That is simply an incorrect statement. I have listened to the entire hearing of that meeting. You can do the same. Not a word was spoken about it. But let's go to the substance here. And again, my question to you is, don't you think if the board wanted to invoke the formal definition of building height, they would have said so? An ordinary reading of the overall height of the residence mean, how high is it? And it needs to be down by a foot. And secondly, do you see any evidence in the April 2024 regular meeting, which ratified the consent hearing, that there was any determination of whether or not these plans conformed? And we'd like to show you where they do not. Okay, so here we are back in January 2023, and I'm going to call your attention to the floor to lot area ratio. And so ask first the question, where did that come from? And how did they do that? And in particular, how did they do that for the first floor? Here's the plan sheet for the first floor in the January 23. They call it out at 1,784 gross area, and we've measured and we agree. That's, that's what's there. And that's the footprint of it. Okay. And then here's the applicant's exhibit for the perimeter wall measurement. And as I'm sure or I trust you know, the rules of the game are is that if the red wall, which is the wall that has less than four feet of clearance between finished grade and ceiling, that's one set of measurements, and the green wall is that which has more than four feet of clearance. And if the red wall is longer than the green wall, then you kind of think of it as a half daylight basement. And for purposes of F A R calculation, you get to deduct half of the net area on that floor. And there's their numbers, straight off their plan sheet. They did all the measurements themselves, not me. And sure enough, by just a couple of feet, the wall length is a little more, the, the low clearance wall is a little more than half of the total wall. But we have a question. What, what is this wall back here? What, what's happening there? And, and more importantly, what's behind it? There's no obvious access. It's clearly the footprint of the overlying second floor, but it's not clear that it's actually doing anything as far as the first floor goes. So that's our question. It kind of looks as though actually the perimeter of the first floor is the blue dashed line. But the honest truth is that in the January 2023 plans, there is not enough information to know. We just don't know. And the design board didn't know, and staff didn't know, and they may or may not have asked. The good news is that there's more information now on the April 24 plans. So here's the April 24 floor plan. It's added a little bit out there into that gray area, but certainly not all of it. And I have added the perimeter red and green walls from January because that was not provided in the April 24 plans. So now we get to go through the same exercise again. What is that back there? What is that space? Should it be counted as part of the first floor? And again, the good news is there is new information available. Okay, here's the foundation plan from one of the structural sheets on the April 24. And this is our question. What is that wall? And again, you can see the outline of the presumptive perimeter of the first floor. And here it is again, over on the left, and we get a cross-section. And here's the cross-section. There's the wall. And it doesn't look like there's really much behind it. In fact, it looks like the foundation for whatever might be that outer perimeter doesn't even get down to the level of the first floor. And we get a cross-section next slide, also from these 2024 plans. And this is what it looks like. There's the wall, and it's a concrete wall. Actually, they call it a concrete retaining wall, and it's got a footing drain at the base of it. This is not an interior wall. This is the back of the first floor. So now we know. That gray area is not part of the first floor, and that red perimeter wall is kind of a little overly ambitious. It really should be pulled into the blue, and some of those dimensions remain relevant, but those yellow dimensions are all parts of the wall that need to be actually deducted from their January 23 calculation. Because remember, they didn't provide any calculations in the April 24 plan set. They just rode with this. So we've done the arithmetic. You're welcome to check it. But all those numbers are numbers straight off their plan sheets. And when we do that, what we find is that both the total perimeter wall and the low clearance walls are reduced by somewhat more than 20 feet, almost 21 feet. And the result of that is that the low clearance perimeter wall is less than the total perimeter of the first floor. And if it's not 50%, and it's not, then you don't get to deduct 50% of the net floor It does not apply. Okay, so let's see how that plays out. That's what was approved on the left. 84% F A R, of maximum of F A R. And the design board said, great, you met our condition. In the middle is what was presented in the April 24 plan set. And again, there is no justification for the perimeter wall calculation in that plan set. They're just kind of riding on the coattails of January 23. We have fixed that. We've added back the 800 square feet that is the half of the first floor net area that should not have been deducted. And when that happens, we actually get a substantial increase in the maximum F A R. And that is the substantial difference from what was approved. It obviously does not substantially conform to what was granted. So in summary, you know, look, this, there've been nine hearings. We have been at every single one of them. And we're still here, two years later. Because we know that it's too large. And you can look at the drawing in the lower right, and, and anybody can see that. But we understand we need to meet specific requirements, and we believe we have. The overall height of the residence was supposed to be lowered by one foot, zero inches, and it has not. That's one. And the plans that have been submitted do not substantially conform to what received preliminary design approval. Whether rightly or wrongly, that shows an 84% maximum of F A R, and that is clearly and emphatically not the case. And with that, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson. How much time does the appellant have left?
Thank you, Chair Baughy. The appellant has five minutes and 29 seconds left.
Okay. And you will be able to use that to respond to comments later.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So next, since this item, the applicant has a time period of 15 minutes, and you could have 20 if you want, 22. And hopefully you don't use it, to respond to the appellants' comments. And whenever you're ready, please state your name for the record and proceed.
Thank you, Chairman Baughy and members of the planning commission. Thank you for your time this afternoon. My name is Thomas Moss. I'm a licensed architect and project manager at Anna Kappa Architecture. With me is Tony Schoenhardt, a licensed architect and director of design at Anna Kappa Architecture. We are here representing Jared Comerford, the owner of this property and the development, which is here as staff has presented as a appeal of final approval, which dictates that we must meet substantial conformance with plans that received project design approval in January of 2023. My presentation will be focused on small design updates we made between January 2023 and April of 2024, which, which resulted in the Single Family Design Review Board's correct determination that we are in substantial conformance of our project design approval, and that resulted in our granting of final approval for the, the project. I'm going to rely on the presentation and staff report that the planning staff presented, as well as the written comment provided by our land judge's attorney, Janet McGinnis, to respond to the appellants' claims in their documentation and appeal documents. So very simple, two changes we made between the project in January of 2023 and April of 2024 is a reduction in the overall building height of one foot six and three-quarter inches and a 58 net square feet increase in the square footage from 3348 to 3406, which is at and below the 85% F A R value that the city's worksheet provides us. Beginning with the change in building height that the appellant has, you know, shown you the documentation for in the hearing of our, you know, different understandings of what the word plate height means and the overall building height in our October 2023 hearing of our first final approval, when we were continued to the consent calendar in April of this year. And in the minutes to that, you know, hearing, number four applies the finding that the proposed project at 34 feet, eight and three-eighths inches shall be reduced by one foot for reduction in the overall height of the residence. We have reduced the project by one foot six and three-quarter inches between October 2023, which is when the board did not find that we met their, their previous comments. And so they clarified and reiterated the comments to us, which we then took into consideration and modified the design of the building to conform to what their determination was. So as, you know, Ted mentioned in his presentation, we raised the lower floor down here by one foot and reduced the height or lowered the height of the roof structure by six and three-quarter inches, saying, meaning that from the exact same measurement from October 2023 to April of 2024, we reduced the overall height of the structure from 34 inches, eight and three-eighths inches, to 33 feet, one and five-eighths inches, which is, you know, exceeding the one-foot height reduction that the board requested. We also want to show this exhibit, you know, confirming, you know, the, the board's direction and findings from the January 2023 hearing that the project reads as one story from Ferrello Road. So this is in a large view of our western elevation, showing Ferrello Road on the left-hand side. This figure here is a scaled figure at five foot eight and a visual line looking towards the structure to the south. And the initial massing of the structure as seen from the road, excuse me, is 10 foot, 11 and one-quarter inch, which falls within the margins for traditional one-story residents in the city of Santa Barbara. I'd also like to reiterate the point that Ted made in his presentation, using the warp plane method per the Santa Barbara Municipal Code, excuse me, this project is in compliance with the municipal code's definition of what building height is, which is from every point along the site, whether it's existing or proposed grade, that point projected upwards 30 feet is what is commonly referred to as the 30-foot height limit across the site. You can see here in our exhibit, just looking at the western elevation, this line up here is that 30-foot height limit, which we fall well below. And in touch presentation, you saw our diagrams of the warped plane that we provided for our January 2023 hearing, where we were in compliance with the warp plane across the entire site. Looking at our F A R calculation sheets, and so we were looking at our F A R in January of 2023, where we have box tier in green, the net floor area is 3,348 net square feet, and our proposed F A R net square footage in our April of 2024 hearing was 3,406 net square feet. I'd like to draw your attention down here in the calculator, which is provided by the city of Santa Barbara, where 85% of max F A R in square feet is 3,421. So that's the absolute limit at what we can exceed, or else we would go over 85% of our F A R value. The city's spreadsheet in itself file rounds those numbers. And so if you're slightly below 85%, if you're 84.67, it rounds it up to 85%. So while it states that we are at 85% on the dot, there's a little bit of, you know, kind of leeway in rounding in mathematics and how that actually arrives that figure. But the crucial, you know, kind of underlining here is that we are below the threshold that it exceeds 85% F A R. The primary change between January 2023 and April 2024 that required us to recalculate our F A R is the inclusion of previously not included net square footage in that value. And as Ted mentioned in his presentation, that is within the building mass itself, so it was not an addition to the structure. It was within the actually contained space in the building. We were allowed to do that through the municipal code's, you know, definitions of what net square footage is, which has an exclusion for addicts, crawl spaces, or similar areas that are used for mechanical uses, and they aren't storage or whatnot. So you can exclude that net square footage from that value. For our, you know, April hearing, we had a comment from our client that I might want to use that space in the future, so please, can we just include that in our F A R calculation? And we made that design change, which I'm going to show you over the next few slides. That, you know, area that is highlighted in green is above the 58 discrepancy between, you know, January and April 2024. So that means that throughout the project, we have to make a little bit of changes. Next to your walls to make sure that we still fall within that threshold stated by the municipal code. The next three slides here show the changes in our floor area ratio between, you know, April, sorry, January 2023 and April of this year. Areas in red indicate an increase in F A R. Areas in purple indicate a decrease in F A R. Looking down here at these areas here, you can have, see that we decreased the F A R or the net square footage, which means the interior line of the structural, of the exterior wall, the interior surface of that is what defines the boundary for net square footage. You can see here these wide flange columns, which is a moment frame structure that was proposed by the structural engineer, which required a, you know, infilling of that wall to a location that was not previously found in our January hearing. This next slide shows that, you know, increase of the area that was previously excluded from our presentation, or, sorry, from our project. And that necessitates, you know, moving of walls here and there to make sure that we still fall within the city's guidelines for what 85% F A R is. Specifically over here on the page north side of the building, but the project west location, where we've moved the wall interior a little bit to make sure that we still fall within the boundaries and the guidance of the F A R calculation. Lastly, here on the third level, we've changed the interior line of the page south wall here to accommodate some structural columns, as well as functionality of a door system, which means that this can't be used for storage. And so the interior line is this line where my cursor is, where we've reduced square footage even further. Overall, throughout the three level changes, we had an increase of 58 net square footage, which is shown here in our F A R calculations between January 2023 and April of 2024, which aligns with, you know, our presentation and still conforms to the, to the S F D B's approval of this as a project that's 85% or less of the F A R. I want to reiterate that this project has gone through extensive review. Mr. Hamilton Roard indicated, you know, this is the ninth hearing we've had for this project. This has been scrutinized by staff. Pilar Plummer, who presented our last project, was actually the first planning planner assigned to the project in, in 2022. And she issued a completeness determination in November of 2022. We've had, you know, numerous hearings before the Single Family Design Review Board, where they've looked at our documentation. We've had numerous planners look at our project and deem that we are compliant with the guidelines in the municipal code of Santa Barbara. We've had a hearing before the city council where they upheld our approval of project design approval. And we've been, you know, approved for final approval by the Single Family Design Review Board, by board member Garpadi and the rest of the board in April of this year. We've met every single issue or condition that has been placed on the project. And so we asked the board to deny the appeal and uphold the final approval hearing, or final approval determination from earlier this year. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Johnson, how much time does he have left on his clock?
Thank you, Chair Baughy. There is nine minutes and 36 seconds left on the clock.
Okay. So they both have about nine minutes. Okay. So we will now take comments from the public on this item. We have, I presume, some speaker slips. And if you are a part of a group, you could give up your time to another speaker and batch your time, but you have to state that ahead of time. So just put that out there for you. of time, so just put that out there for you. Can we start with the first public speaker?
Thank you, Chair Baki. Yeah, at this time, I do have six speaker slips, so we'll go ahead and start with Emma Brinkman. If you want to make your way up to the podium, you'll have three minutes to speak, and we'll have Michael Marzola to follow.
I'm Emma Brinkman, and I reside at twelve sixty-one Ferella Road. One of the slides that staff provided showed that required permits were obtained for the removal of the front setback trees. This was not done voluntarily by the design team. Even though the project landscape architect was an SFB member at the time this project came before the board, I brought it up during public comment that it was a requirement as they treated it like it was kind of an afterthought, and it, I brought it up during PDA, I believe, and it should have been. I've attended several stack meetings and gone on several site visits with the team, and oftentimes when it's brought up at the end of the project, the project has gone too far along, and they just basically say, oh, well, the project, we're not going to ask for the removal of those trees, even though they're right in the middle of a driveway, proposed driveway. So I really thought it was disingenuous, for one, not to bring it up at the beginning of the process and wait till the end. Probably, if I had not brought it up, it would have been a total oversight. It would have never been done. That's just my feelings about it. And that just brings me up to a sort of a beef I have about the whole process. Architects and designers are not bound to provide accuracy in their submittals. Through this approval process, we have brought multiple errors to the attention of planning staff. There is no downside for the applicant to make errors that benefit their project, only the upside that the error will not be caught. We have discussed this issue with counterstaff, and we're told they accept the plans as submitted as being accurate. This is not the only project where we've experienced submitted errors that benefit the proposed project. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, we'll have Michael Marzola, followed by William Dillon.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Marzola. I live at twelve sixty-five Ferella Road. I'm the neighbor, one of the neighbors joining the project. And I wanted to say, after Emma's words, that, yeah, we've seen this happen in our neighborhood already once before, twice before, in fact, where a project is put forward, and what ends up being built is not quite exactly what was on the plans, from what we understand. But at any rate, we live next door, the proposed demolition and construction project. The Single Family Design Board told the architect to lower the building by one foot. This has not been complied with, in spite of what they're saying. There are other issues with this project, bulk and scale, which we talked about. It is way out of scale with the rest of the neighborhood. It's basically a McMansion that is being proposed. It'll be two and a half times the size of our home and the one adjoining it. It'll be the largest building in our neighborhood, in our immediate neighborhood, at least. From the street, it reads, is a three-story building blocking the views of the city and channel. The third-story bedroom and adjoining garage, two-story garage, will block sunshine and impose on our personal privacy. The owner was told to reduce the height by one foot, I already said that, reduce the windows and raise the window sill heights to satisfy adjacent neighborhood privacy concerns. Any large expanses of glass glazing, such as the entry and stairs that face the neighborhood directly from either side, east or west, shall be diffused in nature with some kind of ground glass or diffuse glass or with some other kind of privacy screening. As best we can tell, that has not happened. The decks are to be pulled back from the property line by fifteen feet. This has not happened. The plans do not show full compliance. Thank you. And thank you for everybody for your time and energy in doing this work voluntarily. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Up next, we'll have William Dillon, followed by Wia Gupta Elapola. I apologize if that pronunciation's incorrect.
Hey, Bill.
Good afternoon. Members of the Planning Commission, I'm William Dillon, a local attorney here on behalf of, I want to call him Mike and Rose, but it's Ms. Wills and Mr. Marzola. I've known him for over thirty years. I am not retained as counsel to be here today. I'm here because I'm their friend. You have a letter in your packet from me dated May twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. It raises two issues, one of which is, in terms of legal remedies, moot. I had some really cooperative, helpful discussions with your city attorneys deputy the last couple of days, and the request to have the hearing by the Single Family Board be voided, the request is too late under the statute. It's pretty clear it's got to be done in thirty days, and we did not do that. So I still think you should consider sending it back to the Single Family Design Board, because there was no actual notice to the appellant's that that hearing was taking place. They were at the eleven AM hearing, but not the three PM meeting. I give more detail in the letter, but I have to move on to, to finish this within your three minutes. The second basic observation I made and legal point is that the findings are not adequate at the Single Family Design Board. They are making the ordinance findings, findings required by your law. However, under general administrative procedures, there should be a finding on all the contested issues, which explains the evidence or cites the evidence, explains the conclusion, shows the conclusion, and explains the link between the evidence and the conclusion. The height issue is not discussed in that kind of detail anywhere in the record that I could find. So you're not really left with an understanding of whether the height should be measured on the city municipal code or not. I think the best reading, the best interpretation, though, is there was no mention to the municipal code throughout the entire process, so therefore, interjecting it now, I commend the staff for finding that and applying it. That does not make sense. The way, my read of the record is that there was a concern about the height of the building. Nobody was complaining that the building was too deep. So to raise the building six inches and keep the height basically the same and say, well, that's a six inches lower or a foot lower, that, I think, defies the context of the hearing And then the same thing would apply to all the other appellate issues, the issues on privacy, the window sills, the location of the windows, the decks, you know, if there was findings on that, you would have a record to look at, decide, you know, was this properly done, and you don't have that in front of you. If this went to court, that'd be a way to attack any final decision, and with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Up next, we'll have Wia Gupta Elapoya, and then Consuelo Benavides to follow.
Wia Gupta Elapoya, I live right across from this house under consideration. My house number is one-two-eight-zero Ferello, and I call it the Spanish adobe. So the height of this house is the main issue that I have, and it's been considered, it's been recommended that be lowered by one foot, and that would make a huge difference to my view, and so I urge or appeal to the whole board that please have the house lowered a foot, because once a house is built, my view will be forever obstructed, and so I beg the developer to lower the house, nothing else for the community of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the audience.
Okay. Up next, we'll have Consuelo Benavides, followed by Rebecca Nect.
Thank you again for your time. I have some slides here that, if you don't mind me, let's see, how can I use this? I guess we'll probably start, and my husband's not here, so if I could have this time, that would be great. Turn it on. Got it? Okay. And then this just goes under here. Let's see, does that work? Does this need to be turned on? Is this in the right place?
Yeah, it's just okay. Press the button.
We could pass the demo round if you'd like. Oh, is it working? Okay, great. This is from our back deck. This is the fence that is adjacent to twelve sixty-nine Ferello. You could see these were the story poles that were put up initially, quite a long time ago, but they didn't finish putting it up, and they didn't give us a reason why. So you can't see to the extent that the building is going to go, but you can see that they tower over our back area, where the chairs are there, the lounge chairs, just up from there on the left, that's our bedroom. And the fence that goes all the way up to the street or just about the driveway, that's our bedroom as well. This right here is our bedroom, and we are not, our sun will be blocked completely by this new addition, or this new house, or whatever you want to call it. It's a house, I'm sorry. So we will have no light whatsoever all day long, not at all in our bedroom. Here is what the house will look like once it's built. The third story up above, that's what will be towering down on us. We will have zero privacy whatsoever. Our jacuzzi, our bedroom, our back area, into our living room, it's our sun, our private, everything. And I know that we're not supposed to talk about privacy. Sun, all that doesn't matter, but it matters to us because we've had it for thirty-five years, and it's really emotional for us. Here's another slide for you. This is the proposed, they're drawing there. This is our house, again, the same. So I just wanted to show you those. This is what we will see. I have a minute left. Thank you. It's been emotional because we've gotten different measurements from the very beginning. So I don't know if it's going to be twenty-five feet, thirty feet, whatever. All I know is that they're going to go ahead and build this eventually, and we're not going to have any say whatsoever in what has happened. They proposed to put air-conditioned unit right by our bedroom, saying that it's supposed to be below a certain decimal, whatever. How will we know that? It's been disingenuous. It hasn't been open communication. We tried early on, and as, and so our hands are tied, I know that. Forgive me, I'm really emotional. Everyone cares about our neighborhood, and we, it's massive, this new place, so I just want you to keep that in mind when you are making this decision again, that, you know, it's just going to change our lives one hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, we'll have Rebecca Nect.
Thank you. I'm Rebecca Connect. I live at sixteen Rubio Road, so behind my house, this house will be built. When they talk about that the roof will only be six feet, one foot, you know, how many ever feet taller? This was a tapered house that will now have a flat roof that will, I will now directly look at, and I think nobody could appreciate it until the flagpoles were put up. They did it voluntarily, but that was when we realized that this was going to be totally out of control. I appreciate that you guys have come out and looked, because I think you kind of get a feel for what we are having to adjust to, and I appreciate everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. So moving on, do we have any virtual comments?
Thank you, Chair Baki. At this time, we don't have any virtual participants, but we did receive written correspondence from Janet K. McGinnis, William M. Dillon, Rose L. Wills, and Brian Hershkovitz, and Diana Miller, that was distributed to the commission prior to the hearing. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Baki.
Okay. So we're going to move on to my commissioners and any questions that they may have. So who would like to ask the first question, or maybe many?
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I may. I did submit a letter, and it's not showing up, and I'm not sure why. And I'd just like to make sure for the record that you know that I did submit a letter. And I believe there are a couple of other letters as well that didn't show up, so we're kind of perplexed by that. Thank you.
And your name was, though?
Marzola.
Okay.
And can I say one more thing?
Sure.
We did meet originally with the owner, and I remember clearly, and I think that some of the other people sitting around the table with him could also support this, that he said, no, we're not going to raise the roof any higher, only a little bit higher than the original roof line. Clearly, that's not happened. And you can understand why we're, and we did meet with him a few more times after that. So in good faith, we were willing to work with the owner and the architect, but I keep feeling like we're getting, you know, bum, bum-rolled, or whatever you call it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Who would like to ask a question? I'm not getting any words. I'm getting nothing, but you can start. Okay, Mr. Whiskam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll probably have more questions, but I'd just start with a couple of basic ones. Mr. Moss, could you come back up, please? I want to, so when you, when you lowered the roof by, what is it, one foot, six and three-quarter inches, but you raised the finished floor of the first floor from, from two-thirty-two to two-thirty-three, or whatever, is that right?
Correct, ma'am. Yes.
Why did you do that?
The, the motion by the Single Family Design Review Board in October twenty-twenty-three stated that the overall height of the residence be reduced by one foot.
Correct. I watched the meeting, yes.
Building height is measured a couple of different ways. The measurement that we were, you know, taking from that point was the measurement that I showed in my presentation, the thirty-four foot, eight and three-eighths inches, and the reduction to thirty-three, one and five-eighths inches. That was the dimension that the board requested we reduce, and we reduced it, and the board found that we reduced that measurement. The other few ways that we measure height in the city of Santa Barbara per the Municipal Code is the warp plane method, SBMC thirty-point-one-five-zero, point-zero-nine-zero, I believe, if I'm correct, which is the point at what, from, across the site, from whichever point is lowest existing proposed grade up thirty feet, and we satisfied that requirement. The board made no determination in their minutes from October of twenty-twenty-three where the reduction in height needs to take place from, just a reduction in the overall massing. And we complied with that by reducing, you know, the level at which the roof is in our April hearing, and reduced the overall bulk, scale, and mass of the project by raising it, so the overall height of this residence is lowered by one foot, six and three-quarter inches. We presented that to the board, and the board found that that met their instructions, and then therefore they approved the project.
Okay. So you use the, the Santa Barbara Municipal Code definition of how to do height, which is entirely complicated, but you still, well, it is complicated, because we've dealt with it before, but, and I don't understand it, I'm not an architect, I'm a landscape architect, so, but, so what we're getting to here is that, that you satisfied the letter of the law, but the, but now the, the building height is actually, the height of the whole building is actually one foot, it's, the finished floor is one foot higher.
The finished floor, the lowest part of the structure is up by one foot. So the, the proposed development is that there's the existing project, and then there's a little bit of an addition that is on the lowest level that we were rate, that was, you know, meant to go down two foot from the existing finished floor of the residence. We raised that up by one foot, but if you look at the overall structure and the projects, and I can, if you allow me to go and bring my laptop up here, I can show you the, okay.
Go ahead. I mean, I think this is one of the, the big issues that we're asked to look at for substantial conformance.
I actually, is this displaying across to the other screen yet?
I'm only, I'm doing this line of questioning because I feel that raising the first floor level makes, makes it even more.
raising the first floor level makes, makes it even more imposing. So that, that's what I'm trying to get at. So I just.
Pardon my interruption. Through the chair to Commissioner Whiskam, I can, I can help answer that if, if you like.
Okay, yeah, sure, thank you.
In basic terms, what's happened with the building height is it's gone from, it's kind of been squished. So the first floor has been raised, and the, the top floor has been reduced slightly. So the overall effect is not an increase in height, it's a slight reduction in height.
Right, but the building is sitting, the, the finished floor is sitting a foot higher than it was before.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, so it's kind of a, you know.
Can I make an additional clarification there? Sorry, thank you, Ted, for assisting. The, the existing structure has a finished floor level of 240, 200, this is above sea level, on this value of 244 foot, one and one-half inch. And that's what we're taking as like, that's the general, like, datum line where we're taking measurements.
So you're, you're actually going down.
So the existing residence has an existing basement level. And that is, you know, an existing level we want to try and keep and whatnot. The client's programmatic decisions, I want another, you know, like bedroom down there for my in-laws or whatnot, for people to stay. To add that to the, the proposed development, we proposed to add a little bit of an addition of square footage on that lowest level. To do that, we were suggesting we should excavate down even further from the existing lower level of the building. So that, you know, increases the overall height of the residence by kind of digging down for, for the structure. To satisfy the board's direction of reducing the overall height of the structure, instead of digging down, you know, three feet and increasing the height of that building this way because it's no, not a, a, it's kind of like a slinky, if you like, thing one, right, like this. So we moved it up a little bit, that excavation. So we're reducing the overall apparent height of the structure, but we're still within the, the board's, you know, determination that we are going to be, you know, reducing the overall height of the structure by one foot, six and three-quarter inches. So if you kind of look at where my cursor is right here, this is one level right here. So from this direction, here to here, in this, in this direction, we've reduced that dimension down. So the overall roof is going to be lower than it was previously. In this direction, where my cursor is, we've moved this level up by one foot. So as Ted put it, we've squished the building down so that the roof is lower than it was previously. The bottom of the structure was higher than it was previously. So we haven't, you know, moved up the entire thing up a foot and then reduced the height from there. We've, you know, kind of like taken bite-sized from both ends to reduce the overall height of the structure.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. And then, let's see. So substantial conformance from the meeting, I think it was the October 20, 2023 meeting, number four. Oh, the decks, that reduced the west side deck. There's been talk of bringing the decks back 15 feet, but I think there was a comment at the meeting that, that the plans were not being interpreted correctly, and that wasn't really a deck that was. You did reduce the west side deck, right? That's what you said, or that's what Mr. Weber said.
I, I don't have that in front of me, I can't confirm that or not. The, the decks are in compliance with the City of San Barbara setbacks.
And I think there was an interpretation that they weren't, but, yeah.
Okay, no, they are in compliance with the city setbacks. And in fact, we, you know, took an existing non-conforming structure and made all parts of the structure compliant with the setback. So there is an incursion in the front yard setback that we eliminated, and an incursion to both side yard setbacks that we have eliminated as part of the proposal. So everything conforms to the municipal code setback guidance.
Okay, and then the, the, the board talked about the privacy screening, and they were told that you've revised the wood slats to reduce transparency and added some screening to increase privacy.
So I can show you, this is the January 2023, when we received project design approval. This is the western elevation. And this is the stairwell that was commented on as, you know, providing some privacy screening there. And there are some other glazed openings here that you can see where my cursor is hovering, where there isn't any privacy screening. This is the proposed project at our April hearing. So you can see here, this is that same glazed opening where we provided screening and coordinates with the board's direction, as well as increasing privacy screening down here on the second level as well, looking to the west. So we took the board's directions into account in terms of increasing privacy. Our owner as well wants, you know, his, his right to privacy from neighbors as well. And so we want to make sure that he's comfortable in his own space. So we have taken the board's direction to reduce the amount of visible glazing from the properties adjacent to them.
Okay, and did you raise window sill heights?
We did not raise any window sill heights. That was a, you know, comment, suggestion in the design update, but we did not take that suggestion.
Okay, so that listed as number nine to raise window sill heights. No, that didn't get, that, sure, yeah, let's, since we're looking at substantial conformance, I just, thank you for being here today.
Hi, yes.
And pardon my interruption, excuse me, Ms. Grefiti. I have the minutes up on my screen, if, if that's helpful.
Yeah, is that, I have it listed as number nine. Is from, is that from the October 2023 hearing?
This is, the minutes I currently have on screen are the January 2023, January 17th, 2023 minutes.
Oh, January 2023, okay.
So this was the original project design approval hearing.
Okay, so that's, that's number nine, okay. If possible, to satisfy neighborhood and, and, I can't remember what the, what Mr. Weber's response was. Therefore have made reductions in window height on the west side. That, I think that's what he maybe said. Is that, does that sound like right, the right?
That sounds accurate to me, and I can let the, the Dan, Anna Kappa architects, sorry, speak to that. Katie Grefiti.
Just for clarification, for the record, could you please state your name?
Yeah.
I believe you're representing the Single Family Design Board.
Correct, my name is Katie Grefiti. I represent the Single Family Design Board. I was the reviewer from the consent item on April 8th, I believe, 2024. And I was also present on October 23rd and at previous meetings as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. To go back to number nine, and from my perspective or my understanding, so these were items that we actually reviewed on October 23rd. These were not the items that were in our motion from October 23rd that were guidance to me to make final approval on April 8th. So these were satisfied, anything besides the FAR requirement at 85% and the one foot in overall height reduction were the directives that I focused on from April 8th. In terms of the window item, I can leave it to the architects to talk us through that. But I know that that was satisfied from the board's perspective. Otherwise, it would have been included in our, our motion moving forward.
In your motion before you granted.
And they're all, I mean, a lot of times we're giving guidance towards, and a lot of these things are to satisfy the spirit of something. So it could be privacy, it could be glazing, there are a number of different reasons. And the applicant isn't necessarily required to follow it exactly, but they can come back and describe a justification or exactly the steps they took to think about resolving those items.
Okay.
So I'm not exactly sure for that item what the outcome was. But if we did not feel as a board that it was met, that would have been included in the motion for the meeting on April 8th.
Right, right, okay, yeah, because I know you, you, there were some pickups on, in that one.
And in, and in general, when our four, our, our full board sends an item to consent, it is because we feel there are very, very minor details and really minimal discussion, very black and white. It is one member present, could be any of us, it happened to be me that day. But typically, it's something very black and white unless huge plans were changed without discussion, which wasn't the case from my perspective.
Great, okay, thank you, thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it. There was some discussion at, at that meeting about FAR. And is it 85% or lower? Mr. Hamilton, roll, maybe you can answer this. Is it 85% or lower, or lower than 85%? I know the Single Family Design Board, it's a technicality, but it, it, it was discussed, which is why I'm bringing it up, and I'm not even sure it had a conclusion.
At the first, thank you, Commissioner Whiskam, through the chair to you. At the second, I'm sorry. At the first final approval hearing, there have been a lot of hearings, the, the item number three here says the project floor-to-lot area ratio shall be 85% or less.
Okay, that's, that's.
So it shall not exceed 85%.
Okay, because I know there was some discussion about that, okay. And then I'm jumping all over here. Mr. Moss, can you come back up here? I want to talk about that, the, Mr. Booth talked about that retaining wall, that concrete red retaining wall. Can you address that? I'm, I'm.
So in a structure that's going to be subgrade, there's, you know, retaining walls that are put into place. I'm not a structural engineer, so I can't, you know, ascertain or explain, you know, how deep things need to be or, or things like that. When we're giving, you know, our advice to our clients in trying to develop a project, we always take the, the most conservative approach in how things are defined, just so we, you know, worst-case scenario, the, the worst interpretation of this is X amount. And so we, you know, take that worst-case approach and design and try and permit something using the worst-case approach. A concrete retaining wall that was shown as a detail is actually on the eastern side of the, of the property. And that, the plans are arranged where the, the western property line on the actual parcel is oriented north on our drawings. So the, the drawing that Mr. Booth sho, showed is a cross-section or a cut through the building on the very eastern part of the property, right adjacent to 1265 Forello. So that's a partially subgrading, a partially above-grade retaining wall that spans from the foundation, which is level one, up to level two. I'm not sure what the question is, or if I, if I answered the question.
Well, he, I, I think Mr. Booth wanted to, wanted clarification on that or thought that that should be partially included in the FAR. I, I know you don't include basement, but this was, this was shown, and he said, what's in this space in, in his slides? I assume you were listening to his presentation. What is this space?
Right.
In his slides? Because I think that the, the implication was that there might be some, there might be some implication for, for an increase in, in FAR.
Right, and what, what we do is we take that space and we include it in our FAR calculation. In the instance that if we, you know, the client throughout the construction process wants to include that in the future, that's counted towards that FAR. So all the gray space that was in Mr. Booth's presentation was part of the justification to, you know, just the overall FAR calculation. It was included in that value, it wasn't excluded, it was actually included. And so all of our documentation shows that space is being counted towards the overall FAR of the project.
Okay. And I think that's, that's all I have for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all.
Okay, next is Commissioner Lodge, followed by Commissioner DeLuccio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I saw that slide that was just up of the west elevation and Mr. Moss's comment that they raised that floor and sort of squished the building, I thought, well, that's a pretty crafty move. To me, reducing the overall height of the project means that that top floor comes down at least a foot. And I, I really can't accept that. It is, yes, you, you know, depending on how you'd interpret, reduce the overall height, you did that. But it's not what the, I can't imagine that was the intent of the Single Family Design Board. Or perhaps the commissioner from that board would like to comment, probably, yes.
That's a great question. It's challenging. The intention behind the reduction in the one foot in general is, was not to meet a guideline or anything like that, it was already below the height guidelines. I think it was an effort to try to help appease some of the resistance that we've, that the board was getting and that the applicant was getting on the project. I wasn't the maker of the motion. I did approve it from my perspective. It was a one-foot reduction in the overall height. It's hard, we're explaining it, it's complicated, the, there's three different stories, and they're not stacked directly on top of each other. So it's, it's just kind of a difficult, even for us to understand. My perspective was that it was reduced, and that's why I made final approval. The other two board members that were on the board are no longer on the board either. So I, I'm really the only person that reviewed the project that can speak to that. I completely understand where the neighbors are coming from when we talk about the spirit of where the one foot was reduced. So even me sitting here a little bit, it's hearing it again, being explained, and it's challenging. I, I, I know, I'm, I'm, feel like I'm, yeah, I'm the person with the answer. And my answer was that I did find that it substantially conformed with what we asked. It was kind of a complicated ask. And looking back, I wish that we would have cited a specific code or required it come back to full board instead of consent so that it could have been recorded and we could have all heard it. But the reality is, this is where it stands today. And, and that's my perspective, was that it, that it was met. So I get it, it's, this has been a high emotion item for the years that we've reviewed it. And I, again, think there are a lot of valid concerns. A lot of them we moved past through giving this project project design approval, saying on October 23rd that it substantially conformed to the plans with the two conditions that we applied. And then, you know, re-reviewing FAR, which was one of them, and then the other one, the one foot. So I found that it was reduced. You know, I don't know what more I can say to that.
I'm not criticizing you.
Yeah, no, I, I know, it's, it's.
It's so.
I wish it was a bit more straightforward, to be honest, in the project so that it was clear from which portion of the project is there one foot. And we intentionally did leave it broad, but I think that was deliberate for the applicant to be able to decide. If we were really clear that there was one portion, and that was an item up for discussion, we would have left it in the motion. But it was left broad.
Okay, thank you.
And through the chair to Commissioner Lodge. I just wanted to add, I, I was there at the SDB consent hearing where Board Member Grefiti made the final approval decision. And those consent hearings are not recorded. We only have the minutes. So we don't have video playback like we do for the full board reviews. But being at that hearing, I can say that Board Member Grefiti did repeatedly ask the applicant if they had reduced it by that one foot and going by that technical definition. So it was something that was reiterated and discussed at length before she made that motion. So I just wanted to give that context, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Having watched a number of these hearings and hearing the neighbors' comment, I know the concern was the, was the overall, overall height, mass, and scale of the project. And squishing the building doesn't answer that for me, anyway. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner DeLuccio.
First, I want to thank Commissioner Whiskam. You ask most of the questions, you know, the pertinent ones in front of us. And I'm going to ask staff something. Actually, when they do the consent hearings, the requirement is just to have one commissioner? Or is there sometimes more than one that attends?
Through the chair, to the Commissioner. We only do require one board member to be there. It has happened before where board members do request an additional board member to attend the hearing as optionally, if we believe that the item would be more difficult and more discussion was warranted. But generally, it's just one consent reviewer, one board member.
And is it typical that the consent meeting takes place in the morning and then, in the regular Single Family Review Board meeting is in the afternoon?
Yes, so we have consent hearings every Monday in the mornings, around 11:00. And then, the full board hearings are every other Monday. So, this hearing, this consent hearing that happened on, let's see, on April 8th? Yeah, that April 8th date, we did also have a full board hearing that day. It happened to happen that way.
So that's, is that typical?
Yeah, every other week, yeah.
I mean, sometimes they'll meet in the morning and have the, and bring it forward to the full board in the afternoon?
Yes, to ratify the minutes and therefore the decisions of the consent.
Okay. I guess, I have a question, actually, maybe for our esteemed Commissioner here today from Single Family. Thank you, thank you so much for coming. And I know you've been through this for a couple of years, and I think there's been a lot of turnover on your board, is that correct?
Correct.
And some of the members from two years back to today.
I'm the most tenured member, and I've been on the board for a year and a half.
And this has been to your board a number of times?
Yes, so I joined the board, and this was actually, I believe, the first item, or definitely the first hearing I was at. As a requisite, I reviewed all the very long videos of the meetings from the earlier consent, but correct.
And you made the motion to give final approval. However, you were open to continuing, continuing it and bringing it to consent to relook the height, correct?
Correct.
So the overriding concern here has been the height all along? You know, the possible reduction to the height?
Correct. Well, that is the one point or one condition that I reviewed at the final approval meeting at consent? Yes, and verifying that the FAR was 85% or below, although that is not something in our purview. That is something for staff to confirm. But as just an extra layer of verification on our end, it was very important from a lot of the public comments that we got, so that was also included.
So, as we're here today, it is at 85%, according to staff? It is, does meet the 85%? Otherwise, it would have to go through a modification?
That's correct.
Okay, so those are the couple of issues, and then they had, and then they were, the privacy issues, correct?
Correct. Those weren't in the motion, well, privacy issue, there were a lot of different privacy issues in general relating to the project that were addressed in different ways throughout different hearings. But we also had some discussion around a hedge height and, I believe, an oak to be protected that was bordering one of the neighbors. That was in a formal motion.
And that's all regulated by the municipal code, isn't it correct? If it's, you know, the height and how high it can be and all that?
That's correct.
And then if there's an issue, that would, that'd be addressed through the code?
Yes, Commissioner DeLucio, through the chair to you. If I could expand on that a little bit. This project went through five application completeness reviews, which involved zoning plan check, where the plan checker would look at things like height, floor area, whether or not there's massing in the setbacks, et cetera. So this was reviewed by staff multiple times and found to comply.
And I'm just trying to focus on two things here. One, the review on October 23rd. And all involved out of that was the, was continued for the height. And the city council meeting is really where we're at, I guess, where, to see if we're still in substantial conformity with what the city council had, I guess, decided on. And actually, I saw Section 4 there. That was a point in their ordinance that they passed about. That, again, addressed, had to do with the height reduction. And also, it also had to do with possibly, just possibly reducing the windows and the window sills. But I guess that was not done.
Again, I would have to, I would have to look to Mr. Moss and the team from Architect's.
That was not done. And then I guess, one other thing is maybe the appellate, are you the appellate? Or the applicant? Can I ask you one final question? Thank you. And that has to do with the large expanses of glass for the private, how did you address that, the large expanses of glass?
So, the boards, the boards' direction, and our interpretation of that direction was that there are sizable amounts of glazing on the project. And, you know, these are very narrow lots up on the Riviera. And so, there's, you know, privacy concerns about looking to your neighbor to the west, to the east, but everyone wants to look south towards the ocean and the harbor and the downtown and whatnot. And so, we focused a lot of our privacy screening and reduction of glazing on the western and eastern portions of the structures, so that we eliminate any sorts of concerns about privacy, looking into neighbors' yards or adjacent lots or, you know, whatnot. And so, our interpretation of the board's direction was, we screened all those pieces of glazing that were looking either to the west or to the east, to those neighbors that were really close against the property line. And the board found that satisfactory to meet their, to meet their criteria.
So in other words, you addressed that?
We addressed that, yes, correct.
And then one final question. I know that we have good neighborhood policies and, but at the end of the day, we need to respect each other, but views are not protected, correct?
Commissioner, that is correct. There are, there is language in the Neighborhood Preservation Ordinance findings that public views should be taken into consideration. Public views are defined from how we see it from walking down the street or from the sidewalk. So, an impact of a view from private property to private property is, it's something that the board considers out of neighborliness, but it's not technically a finding that we have to make that those views from private property to, through another private property are protected, unless there is a public view easement made, so.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions, Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Boss is next.
Thank you, Chair Baki. So, the appellate letter, to me, didn't make the case for nonconformance, but the comments that Mr. Booth made today did, I think, sway me a bit. So I'm wondering if staff can respond to, one of the slides noted that correct FAR calculation would show that the project falls above the FAR threshold. So can you respond to that and just talk more about the calculations and the conformance, the substantial conformance between January and April?
Thank you, Commissioner Boss. Again, this project was reviewed several times by zoning plan checkers. And part of their purview, when they're looking at plans, is to make sure that a project complies with the FAR standard. And if the FAR had been above 85%, then additional approvals would have been required. However, staff verified that, even prior to PDA, to project design approval, that this project qualified for that 800-square-foot reduction, that 50% reduction due to the basement level being partially below grade. That is an allowance in the municipal code that this project met.
Thank you, that's helpful. And I think, this is another question for staff, just, I think we've made it pretty clear what's in our purview. It's substantial conformance between project design approval and final approval. So, but, something that I kept in mind was that 30 feet is actually allowed, and this is well below the 30 feet. Private views are not in our purview. But I do understand that the project was squished more than moved down. So I think, actually, this one might be a question for the applicant. Can you explain the thought process between squishing rather than moving it down? Yeah. And these are not technical terms, sorry.
I'm struggling to find an actual technical term, so "squishing" works. The, as I mentioned in response to the Commissioner's questions regarding the expanses of glass, the beauty of the Riviera neighborhood is the views to the south, and you want to capture as much of those views as possible, while creating a space that is livable and inhabitable and whatnot. When we went into our project design approval hearing, we had a plate height on the second level of 10 foot and a plate height on the third level of nine feet. Our client is a tall gentleman, he likes tall ceilings. And so, we were reluctant, or reticent, to reduce the heights of those glazings, just so he can have a pleasant living experience. And so, you know, we elected to take the direction of reducing the plate heights a little bit, reducing the cross-sections of those floor structures a little bit, and raising the floor, just so he could still have the benefit of what is invested in the Riviera. And we explained that to the board when we went back for our consent agenda hearing, and they seemed to find that that was acceptable and in the spirit of their direction. So, it was approved.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, I think this is my final question. This is for the appellate, Mr. Booth. So if the appeal was upheld and final approval was denied, the applicant could return to SFB with slightly revised plans. But again, considering that the height is well below what is allowed, they have, they've reduced the height in response. And I'm just trying to figure out what, what would you want with slightly revised plans? They've already reduced the height.
I would say there are two issues that we would look for. One is a clarification of what the board actually means by reducing the height. And I refer to Commissioner Lodge's comments that raising the back end of the building by a foot is hardly a response to a concern about the building height from the public views, not the private views, the public views from the street. And the second is that regardless of what staff says about the review of the FAR, it seems fairly clear to us that there was no scrutiny made of the first floor space and whether all of the area that was presumed to be part of that floor actually should be included. And the issue is not the square footage, per se. The issue is the length of the perimeter wall. The applicant could propose to dig a 30-foot tunnel and then count 60 feet of wall on either side of it and say, "Look, my wall, my perimeter wall with limited clearance allows me to deduct 50%." We believe, based on our view of those plans, which does not seem to have occurred by staff, that they have included quite a bit of dead space, including that section, which was not a west section, it was an east section. There's no, there's no space there. There is no reason for a boundary to include basically dirt and call that boundary part of the perimeter wall that has less than four feet of clearance. It's not an issue of the square footage. It's an issue of what is the perimeter wall of that first floor? And we see no evidence that staff, or the board, or anybody else has looked at that. And that's what we would expect. The height is important. Like I say, every inch counts. But I would say the real issue is how this project, which is, as been said by one of our speakers, double the size of pretty much every other house on the block. How could this house manage to squeeze in under an 85% max of FAR? And the answer is that it has a 50% deduction that really should not apply, and that should be reviewed by staff with a specific eye towards that.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Wardlow, followed by Commissioner Barnwell.
Thank you. And I want to thank the applicant and the appellantants for all of their efforts in this. This seems like you guys have been working on this for a long time, and this is, this is a lot. So, bear with me, because I'm not an architect. So, my first question is to staff. Can you elaborate on where the concept of it should read like a one-story came from? And kind of where staff's position is on if that has been achieved?
Thank you, Commissioner Wardlow. Through the chair to you. I think probably the best exhibit would actually be the applicant's height exhibit that shows how the project would be viewed from the street with the view line going over the garage.
Do we have that image? Could we pull that up?
Yes, Mr. Moss, thank you for pulling that up. I can also show elevations that I have in the presentation. But I do think this is the most concise way to look at it.
And the quote reads like one story. Where, who said that, or where does that come from exactly? Like, is that supposed to be how this looks? Is that required? Where is that? Because I've seen that quoted, and I've tried to search our staff report, and it's not coming up. I assume it's because it's like PDFed or something, but where exactly does that come from?
So, when the SFB, or sorry, the board is making their findings of neighborhood compatibility, they're trying to find, you know, does this project fit within the context of the neighborhood? In the Riviera, there is, you know, a pretty steeply sloped site. Mr. Hamilton Rowley indicated that the slope is in excess of 20%. And so, there's structures that are below the street that step down the slope, and there are structures that are above the street that kind of step up the, up the slope. And so, when the board was trying to make findings to make sure it was compatible with the neighborhood, they're like, the context of the neighborhood is that you have one stories as you're looking south from the road. And then, you know, as you're looking back up, the slope towards Rubio and Alameda Padre Serra, you have, you know, two or three-story structures there. And so, our directive, or sorry, directive from the board throughout the process was, "We hear a lot of concerns from the neighborhood. We just want to make sure that as you're looking at the structure from the street, that it's a one-story structure." And so, we prepared this exhibit here, and this is a, you know, complicated, this project is very complicated due to the site as it, you know, slopes from both west to east down the road, and also from north to south from Frello down to Paseo Frello below it. So this is one location where you're looking at the structure from the road, and this is the single story that you'll see as you're standing from, directly in front of the structure as you're standing on Frello Road, looking to the south.
So, I'm glad you brought up this image, because this was the image I was going to ask you two guys to bring back up. So, in this, the building continues though, right? And it goes up farther, but that's not being shown in this slide? Like, what does the next part look like?
It's, it's just this location right here. So I can pull up the full elevation right here. So we are looking at the context of just right here. And then, the building continues, and it continues at the same plane. So there's no change in additional stories above that street. It's just that story as you go straight out from the street at that elevation. So it's not going to read as a two-story from the street, it's not going to read anything. And what our exhibit was meant to show is that if you're looking at a view horizon from the road towards the structure, you won't see the portions of the structure that are even taller than that, because you're going to have your view obscured by the roof of the structure immediately preceding it between the street and the rest of the building. So that is what, you know, the board determined was a one-story from the road to fit with the rest of the neighborhood, in terms of that kind of documentation and design style.
Okay, thank you for kind of clarifying that for me. I think, you know, in going to the site visit, and maybe I'm just getting a little confused because there's been a lot of different images showed. But the story poles that were shown at some point, I think in an earlier presentation, it did not read like one story to me, especially when I was standing on the street. If you were to put in, you know, an additional seven feet on top of what you were, what we saw, you know, what the existing building looks like.
Sure.
So, if it's a finding of the design board that it needs to read like one story, do you feel that that's been achieved?
I feel like that's been achieved. The story poles that we voluntarily put up are not indicative of the final result of the hearing. If I were to swap back over to this view here, and this is the elevation that Mr. Hamilton Rowley had in his presentation and what we were reviewing at our project design approval. The story poles relate to this red hashed area right here where my cursor is. So those represent a previous iteration of the design that were higher, that was higher than it was right now. And in December of 20, forgive me, 2022, I believe, when we had a hearing with the design board, we reviewed the story poles with the board. And they made suggestions that, you know, "We don't feel like this is a one-story from the street." And so, "We advise you to lower the height of the structure." And we went back to the drawing board, and we reduced the height to the elevations that were approved in January and also approved in April of this year. And so, we feel that we satisfied the board's request, and the board felt that we satisfied their request, which is why they approved the project. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff. And so, the city council's hearing on this item, they denied the appeal, but with the understanding that with the one-foot reduction, right, that that needed to be achieved. So. So given that council's perspective on that was that that was important, I assume that that was in response, obviously, since they are appealing to neighborhood concern, right? Is that accurate?
Commissioner Wardlow, yes, that's my understanding. My understanding too is that when the project design approval motion was made, not all board members felt that a foot was necessary. Some did not feel a reduction was necessary. That's just my personal recollection, but this was a request from the board to reduce the height.
Okay. And so when we were, and I really want to, I appreciate a lot of the comments and questions made by my fellow commissioners, specifically Commissioner Lodge, because I definitely tend to agree with that, that if this is, the crux of this discussion is really around the community's concern of the height and that, you know, the design board and council agreed that it should be reduced by one foot, that that must be achieved. To reduce it by increasing the bottom floor and kind of squishing does not get at the intent of reducing the overall, you know, height of the building from the street's perspective, right, and from the neighbor's perspective. So from staff, from your perspective, understanding that that's the intent, right? I think we're all in agreement that the intent was to address neighborhood concern, which would be reducing the height from the perspective of the street. If that is not being achieved, then how would we make the findings that this is in conformance?
Thank you, Commissioner Wardlow. That's a bit of a rhetorical question.
Yeah, sorry, okay. That was a little long.
If I understand your question correctly, that is not, that's not staff's decision, that's the board's decision. And I would put that on the commission to discuss in deliberation.
Okay, I appreciate that. Switching gears to some of the questions that I think.
That question is all.
Sure.
When we're, as a design architect, when we're looking at the findings of the board and the minutes they give us, we're looking at the plane test of what they write, which is the previous project was at 34 feet eight and three eighths inches, and we want to reduce the structure by one foot. As with the other parts of motions, you know, raising of window sills, privacy, you know, there's a little bit of wiggle room, as Board Member Kapati mentioned, in terms of how that is interpreted. And we, as design architects, are in, you know, communication and kind of coordination with the board, and we're feel, we're free to propose solutions that we find honor the spirit of that intention of the directive. And it's up to the board to kind of determine whether we've met their criteria. We feel that in our April 8th hearing, we communicated, here are the changes we made from October of 2023, when they made the reduction of height restriction, stating in the fourth point of their motion that the overall height of the residence must be reduced by one foot. We came back to them in April and said, here's how we did that. Did we honor the intention of your direction? Board Member Kapati said, yes, we did. And that's why they found the motion, or they found in their deliberation that we honor the spirit of their intention, so we satisfied the recommendations.
And so from your perspective, you were transparent about how you were going about in reducing the height?
Correct. And, you know, I can, Mr. Herricks can also corroborate that. And Board Member Kapati, I think, is the best person to kind of corroborate that. We were very communicative in terms of, here's how I did this, you know, does this meet your intent? And she determined, yes, we did so.
Thank you for that clarification. And I do appreciate, you know, understanding that you guys were very transparent in explaining how you went about this in the overall height reduction. So thank you for clarifying that. Again, I think a lot of my fellow commissioners ask these questions, but I'm just going to ask staff one more time. Regarding the F A R issue and kind of the points that were brought up in the appellant's presentation regarding the first floor, again, was the, was this, was the issues brought up by the appellant really analyzed by staff in respect to this area of the bottom floor is not usable space? Like, was that all really evaluated prior? Or is this new information to you? Like, the way in which they're explaining it?
Thank you, Vice Chair Wardlow. That is not new information to staff. Floor area is scrutinized as part of the zoning plan check process.
Okay, so you feel, your position is you're good with how it is and the appellant's kind of rationale for how they have concerns that it's actually at 105% F A R versus what staff is purporting at 85%? That staff, you're good with what you have?
Staff is confident that the F A R is at 85%.
Okay. That's the remainder of my questions. I appreciate everyone's work on this. Clearly, lots of efforts have gone into this.
Okay, Commissioner Barnwell, followed by Commissioner Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, boy, oh, boy. Let me ask about that F A R. On the plans that, that looks like a grade beam or some kind of retaining wall there, do I understand correctly that by including that basically dirt area, they then are allowed to take some 50% reduction of some sort as they calculate the F A R? I don't quite understand that.
Chair Bauckey, through to Commissioner Barnwell. I do have the code language up on screen. If we could show that, please. I need to zoom in a little bit here. This code section, Santa Barbara Municipal Code 3020030A2B, was requested by staff to, for the applicant to put on their plans. So this is taken straight from the applicant's plans here. And it's from the code. So this says partially below grade reduced on any floor which is partly below and partly above grade, such as a basement, cellar, or under story. The total floor area of that floor may be reduced by 50% from the floor-to-lot area ratio if more than 12 feet, but less than one-half of the entire length of the perimeter has a distance from grade to ceiling greater than four feet. Staff looked at this code section, reviewed the plans, and determined that the first floor met the criteria to have the 50% floor area reduction.
Okay, that right there explains it all to me. I'd not seen that before. And I think the thing that kind of struck me most in all this discussion was the privacy issue of the adjacent neighbor. And you, the applicant had mentioned screening of the glazing or something. What are you doing to the glass? Are you frosting the glass? Are there shades inside? How is that screening taking place? Is the direction, is it the option of that owner to run up and down shades or curtains or what?
There are multiple ways, one of which is, you know, traditional kind of like roller shade or curtain or not. We chose, and actually I should have brought. Do you have the western elevation handy, Ted, the revised one?
Mr. Moss, from which approval?
April 8th, the final approval hearing.
There we go.
Thank you. The board recommended a number of ways that we could increase privacy from neighbors, including diffuse glass or screen glass, screening the glass. So you can note here where that element in the kind of the second story to your right here, that is a physical wood screen. That is an architectural element that permits a little bit of transparency of light through that screen, but also provides a huge amount of privacy in terms of restricting anyone's view to the west. And that's an architectural aesthetic element that we've repeated in numerous points throughout the project in order to achieve the privacy or to increase the privacy of both the neighbors but also of our owner himself as he uses the space.
So are those baffles angled? Or can you look between them and see how do those work?
Yep, so they're, they're a, you know, a little bit of a rustic screen where it's just, you know, here's two-by-four, a little bit of space, and another two-by-four, another little bit of space, and another two-by-four. So while they're not angled to any particular direction, they do provide a pretty comprehensive screening of, you know, obfuscating any sort of light or any sort of view corridor through those spaces.
So why didn't you frost the glass?
It was the client selective. He didn't, he would like to see some sky through there. The board offered numerous amounts of ways you could increase privacy, one of which was using a screen. And we proposed a screen, and the board was.
Okay, so you took one of the options the board gave you, and that's what? Okay, I have nothing else, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, any others? No, okay. So I've got a couple of questions for staff. I think in your presentation you had a slide revolving around the fact, and maybe this is the way to ask this question, does the city of Santa Barbara have a definition of substantial conformance in its code?
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. No, there's no definition that's codified.
Okay, and then you gave us a slide that you gave us some way to get there as to guidance. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's on screen now.
The project you showed on, I think it was on slide, the slide you just had, I think it was 23, we have a B4 and A4 condition that the actual floor area goes up approximately 100 feet or 80 feet or so?
58 net square.
58 feet? Okay, so it does go up.
Yes.
Between what the PDA and what's there today. Okay, well, that's all I have is questions. I will deal with my other concerns when we get to deliberations. Oh, yes, Commissioner Barnwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had one other question I wanted to ask. When we use the word height, again, these words I think are misleading. What if we were to use the word elevation? Has the elevation been reduced by a foot?
Thank you, Commissioner Barnwell. If you're referring to the elevation above sea level, it's been reduced by a little over six inches for the top of the roof. And I can show that on a slide here. So it's a little hard to see. Okay, there we go. So this is the project design approval, west elevation. The height at this corner here of the roof is 266 feet eight and a half inches above sea level. The same corner of the roof is 266 one and five eighths inches above sea level at final approval.
So that's, that's where the eight inches comes in, or reduction of whatever that is?
Just, it's six and three-quarters, something like that.
So just in layman's terms, regardless of where you start measuring and stop measuring, the elevation has not been reduced by a foot?
The elevation above sea level of the top of the roof.
Well, elevation, that is above sea level. Yeah, that's a, that's a pretty standard number. We don't have to worry about tape measures.
I'm trying to be clear here. The elevation above sea level, that's a common term used in architecture, is, has been reduced by approximately six inches, not a whole foot.
So applicant, what did you think was meant by the board when, in all this conversation about reducing something by one foot? What, I mean, I think the average person on the street would think an elevation type of one-foot reduction.
Commissioner, that is one way to interpret height. You know, as we've gone through these hearings, there's a little bit of dialogue between the applicant and the board, and the board gives directions, and we're, you know, at liberty to submit our interpretation of what that directive is. The board did not state in their, in their motion the term elevation or any sort of measurement above sea level. They addressed a reduction of the overall building height. And the building height has a very strict definition per the Santa Barbara Municipal Code, which is what we used in our determination. Again, we were very clear in how we achieved that reduction in the overall building height. We felt that, you know, if you're looking at the overall building as, you know, if we reduced it by six inches, that portion of the building would not be visible from the street, you know, irrespective of whether it was a foot or six inches lower due to the visible view horizon that the structure's garage creates. So again, it's a very, I understand your point in terms of the elevation versus height, but height has a definition in the municipal code, and we measured our structure via height, and we measured it the exact same way from our project design approval hearing to the October 2023 hearing to the April hearing, and we explained that to the board. And the board, you know, found that our interpretation was approvable, and they approved it.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think there's the letter of the law and there's the spirit of the law. And there is also a public understanding and a professional understanding. And I'm a professional in this business, and it's confusing because of the way we are measuring height, as opposed to, we just want to know, is it taller or not taller? Is it higher up in the air? And particularly when the discussion is including non-experts, a full explanation is still not sufficient because we've all asked that, every single person up here has asked the height question. And the answer is convoluted. And I'm sorry about that. My understanding of today's meeting, and I turn this question to the staff, is we're just here for substantial conformance, right?
That's correct.
Right, okay. So, I mean, my own opinion is it looks like it's substantial conformance, and I have a feeling that if it gets appeals to the council, like, they've already approved it one time. We don't know what they'll do. But I would just say that to the architect, there should be a learning experience here about what we mean and how well we can translate these technical measurements into the nomenclature of the person walking up and down the street. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner DeLucio, you had a.
You probably need an architect on this commission, but that's a whole other subject. Actually, the council, the resolution from the council is about, it's, now I'm going to complicate things more, and I probably shouldn't go there. They talk about plate height. So help me understand that. What's plate height? And then I know when it came before your board, one of the commissioners, the chair at the time, was talking about floor to floor to be reduced by one foot.
Plate height has a definition in the Single Family Design Guidelines. Plate height refers to the top of a wall in a structure. So if you think about your traditional house, you have your, basically where your floor is, you have, you know, a wall where you can put windows and doors, and then you have the top of that wall. The carpenter's definition, top plate is the top part of the piece of lumber that's in that wall. And so we make measurements from the sill plate, which is the bottom of the wall, to the top plate, which is the top part of that wall. And so in our proposal that went in front of the board on October 2023, we noted that our plate height or the top of the wall in the second story was 10 foot. And so that is what plate height refers to. That's the definition of plate height.
Because the council said they shall, which is an absolute word, reduce the second floor plate height, currently at 11 feet eight inches, by one foot to 10 foot, 10 feet eight inches.
So, yeah, therein lies a lot of the trouble. So plate height has a definite term, in which we, as architects, understand the legal definition of a plate height or the traditional construction definition of a plate height is from the bottom of the wall to the top of the wall. We felt in our presentation that we put towards the board in October 2023, we complied because our plate height was at 10 feet. The board disagreed, and we're allowed to have disagreements, that's a process, we worked through the process, which is why they clarified in their October hearing that, you know, to hell with plate height definition, we reduce the overall structure of the building by one foot, which is what we complied with between October and April. And so we, you know.
And they also took out the thing about the second floor plate, second floor height. They said that you can reduce it on any floor?
Correct. The, you know, the, the, I am going to make an interpretation on behalf of the board, and so maybe that question is better directed to the board member that's here. Their intent was whether you reduce it six inches here and six inches there or whatever, just reduce the overall project by one foot. And that's what we did. We elected to take a numerous ways to do that.
Thank you. I have one final question. This is more staff. We make, when we make, obviously, we'll make a decision today, hopefully. If somebody's not happy with the decision, what's the next step? Where is it appealable to? Is it appealable? Maybe the city attorney needs to tell us that.
The, this hearing, your decision is not appealable to council. It's a final decision. The applicant, if you were to basically deny the final approval, would have the option to go back and try and get substantial conformance. Or they could seek judicial review by suing the city and naming, oh, that's it. the city and naming, oh, that's it. It's called a writ of mandating, so it's...
Thank you. And just you answered the question. It doesn't go back to city council. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Booth, you have some remaining time before we get into our deliberations. Would you like to use it?
I do. I would like to take it. Thank you. So give me a moment to plug back in, because I do have a few slides that I think will help us understand things. So let's see, I think you'll have to give me my screen instead of their screen. There we go. And let's see if this will take. Okay, so I want to touch on a couple of issues that have come up. We've heard a lot about how it reads from one story from the street. I think all of you who were out there and who managed to do, walk more than about five feet from direct on the garage could see a view like this. This is with the story poles up. And yes, the garage story poles to the close have been lowered a little bit. The ones in the back, almost not at all. I should also mention the story poles were not voluntarily put by the applicant. We have seen a letter where the community development department required it, and the applicant said, "Okay, I will inform the owner accordingly." So let's be really clear about this. This was not a voluntary action on their part. And frankly, you can see why. So again, the blue arrow is what the cross-sections and the photograph views that are in the exhibits from the applicant continue to show and say, "Oh, my gosh, how could this possibly look like anything but one story?" But all you need to do is walk down the road 10 feet, and the full dimension of this building is apparent. So let's not be selective. Another very curious thing is that the finding of the staff was that you'd be able to see over the top of that miniscule one-story garage. So I want you to look at this, because this was actually presented in the applicant's original, actually, no, in their project design approval. So take a look at that. The garage was taken down a little bit, and you can see the mesa, apparently, over this picture. But watch the power lines. This is a view that was taken from the neighbor's porch, 25 feet above street level, and that's what it actually looked like with the structures sort of photoshopped in. Here's what they presented. The power lines haven't moved, but somehow we're now seeing this, and this was represented as being the street view. It is not the street view. This is the photograph that was the staff's basis for saying, "Oh, I think we'll be able to see the mesa, public views, not private views, over the top of the building." This is, of course, what it actually should look for. This is the picture they submitted for the council appeal, because we had pointed out that that first Photoshop view was completely misrepresenting the condition. And yet somehow we still have this statement that persists in here that, I mean, you don't get it both ways. You can either see over the top of this building or a person standing on the street looks high up in the sky because it's only one story. You really can't have it both ways. And the applicant has tried to do that, and the staff has not corrected it at any point in this set of hearings. Let me take a couple of other things. This is the second floor deck. The applicant was very proud as to how the second floor deck has been pulled back 15 feet from the west property line. It's not been pulled back from the east property line. But I really want to kind of bring you back to this. This is a really big issue, and it's a pity that it's kind of the most, we'll say, zoning code complex issue. It is not about the square footage, per se. It is about what is the perimeter of the first floor? And, you know, we're not going to resolve it in a live hearing, but it still seems really clear to us, and I think anybody else who has looked at these plans, that that red perimeter wall, which needs to be there if they're going to get the 50% reduction, does not outline the first floor. And I will repeat that the April 2024 plans has absolutely no justification for that. There is no information. The staff may have reviewed the arithmetic. They may have plugged the numbers that the applicant gave them into the city spreadsheet. I've done that, too. But, and there, any of us can do that. And sure, we'll get the numbers that they got, but it is not a representation. And all we are asking this board to do is not tank the project. We understand that. Just send it back to the design board. Ask them, would they please make very clear what they mean by reduce the height? Are they really talking about the municipal code definition, and they just forgot to put it in the minutes? Or do they really mean we care about public views and we really want this down a foot? That's one. And the other is, please ask the applicant to generate a full set of plans that include their identification and definitions of the floor perimeter, of the net square footage, of the gross square footage, and let's all look at it. This is not a, this is not a difficult ask, and it seems totally appropriate, given the uncertainties and the creativity that the applicant has taken in both their photographic representations and their definitions. Thank you very much. This has been a long one.
Okay, thank you. So, yes, sir? Yes?
I'm really curious about that red wall. There's no, it's, it looks like some kind of grade beam or some kind of revetment against slope slippage or something. What is, why did you put that out there? What's that there for?
Commissioner, the municipal code allows us to, you know, the perimeter calculation is for any space that contains under stories, things like that. The project is, you know, we've tried to reduce the amount of structure we have between floors as much as possible to lower the overall height of the building. You'd be trying to be as efficient as we can in structural members and whatnot. We still need to run equipment and ducts and things like that. And so what we have tried to do in that location is provide space in an understory for ducting, you know, mechanical runs, you know, electrical runs, plumbing runs, things like that, that, you know, would exist in that space between, you know, the concrete wall and something else. Again, I'm not a structural engineer. I don't, I can't tell you what the best approach to creating that space is going to be. And our documentation is not the final, you know, end-all, be-all of how a contractor's going to be constructing that. They're going to be referring to a, to a, to the structural engineer's drawings. A way we can make that foundation a little bit more efficient is we could, you know, excavate all the way back to that location and just create a really big retaining wall right there, in which case, you know, the section that we provide is going to be a continuation of the floor until you get to a wall, indicating the back of the, of the, of the actual, kind of like, finished floor, that I believe Mr. Booth put in yellow, and then another just kind of rat slab or something like that, that spans between that and the actual back retaining wall, which holds a lot of the soil on the northern part of that lower basement. But that's still an understory. You still have the ability to, you know, run equipment in there and put, you know, boilers and things like that in there. So while I can't tell you exactly what that construction method is going to be, maybe it's a grade beam, maybe it's a very tall retaining wall, we're still using that space in the spirit and the, you know, the actual letter of how the municipal code defines what, how you calculate that perimeter for understory purposes or whatnot. And, you know, staff has confirmed that we are, you know, correct in our, in our interpretation of the municipal code. And, you know, Mr. Hamilton Rowley is stating that, you know, we are doing this correctly. And so...
Well, thank you. And I, staff has verified that, but I want to fall back on that, you know, Mr. John Jones and his wife, Susie Jones. When you get this building built, as per that, what, is it truly going to be open earth? No floor on top of that space between the perimeter wall of the interior area and the red, there's not going to be any building there, right? It's just going to be dirt? So if we went to this house after it's built according to those plans and we walked around it and kind of held our hand on the outside of that wall of the house and walked all the way around it, we would be interior of that red wall. It would be eight or 10 feet away from us. It wouldn't be part of the first floor. Am I correct in that? Am I seeing, am I thinking about that right?
It wouldn't be used, right? But it still counts as an understory for the project and how it's being defined.
Yeah, okay. And again, it's just like the height issue. It sounds, I don't want to say what it sounds like, but it, it doesn't seem very forthcoming. That's my problem with it. It's just going to be dirt when you build a house according to that. This is going to be dirt. And yet somehow we're considering it as part of the first floor. Now, you had mentioned, you'd used the phrase, "if they wanted to in the future." Is that another component of this?
It is not a component of this. The documentation that we submitted in April of this year and received final approval, we are submitting to the Building and Safety Department. That is the, what will be permitted as being built, and we will go through the process of building that structure.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate, by the way, I appreciate all your time. I appreciate everybody else's time. I'm lost in some of the terminology, which is where a lot of these details are hiding. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Could you stay up there, because I have a question for you? As we got into this discussion, and could you or staff put up the cross-section that's on, it's number two for the enlarged driveway section? I'm trying to understand, you know, when we went out to the site, the driveway significantly dives, and then you have a side garage configuration. I'm looking at this drawing. It looks like basically your driveway is basically at the elevation of the street. There's no significant depression. Is that correct?
That is correct. The existing condition that you observed on site is, you know, a typical Riviera development that's on the lower part of the street, where you have, you know, the actual finished floor and the finished floor of a garage is a story below the street elevation. So you would drive down a slope and kind of park in that, in that garage. Our proposal is we are, you know, going to have the actual garage of the structure up closer to the street level. So it was not, you know, what you saw on site is not where the garage is going to be. The garage is a story above that, adjacent to the street level that you observed on the site visit.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to ask for like a five-minute break before we get into deliberations.
Chair Baugherty, I just want to remind you that the applicant has additional time, if they want to take it, that they reserved.
Yes, and they could, probably a good time to do that right now, if you have anything else to say. Okay. So we're going to take a five-minute break and then come back for deliberations. Thank you.
Imagine what we think would be in the minds of SFB members and council when they meant height versus elevation above sea level, but they did determine that the final approval plans were in substantial conformance with the plans and approval granted by both SFB and City Council. So that's the finding that we have to make here today as well. So that's where I'm leaning.
Okay, Commissioner DeLucio.
Being that we have to make a decision up or down, one thing is I want to know, tell me about the balcony and the decks. Is it supposed to be 15-foot setbacks on the east and west side?
Commissioner DeLucio, through the chair to you, that is a guideline in the Single Family Residence Design Guidelines. That's not a code requirement. That's something that the Single Family Design Board has been fairly, has upheld and is pretty strict about. But it is not a requirement. It's not always applicable to every project.
So it's one side 15 and one 10 on the west side? They left it at 10 feet?
I would have to look at the plans to...
That's very important for me to know that. Does the applicant know the answer to that question?
I agree.
Well, I want to ask it again.
The, on the second level, the deck on both sides is at 10 foot from the property line. That has not changed since we received project design approval in January 2023. So when the board approved the decks in project design approval, that was the condition. We did not alter that between January and April of this year. There is a third-story deck, which is on the third level. That deck has a setback of greater than 15 feet on both the west and east sides. During hearings at City Council, there were arguments made that the entire second, or the entire roof structure at the third level would be inhabitable. That is not the condition, and that deck is greater than 15 feet on both sides. So if there's a reference in the minutes to the deck being greater than 50 feet, that might be the deck they're referring to. But I want to be clear that there is no code requirement for a deck setback, and that the decks in both the January 2023 when we received project design approval and final approval in April of this year, they are both at 10 feet. There have been no changes made to that.
There was reference in the City Council resolution about the 15 feet. That must have been the third floor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wiskom.
This is, this is a very, very difficult one because there's, there's, there's good intentions and then there's our code. And, and I, I'm pretty struck by the fact that height is defined in our municipal code. Substantial conformance is not, but I think we're all pretty clear on what that is. But height is defined in our municipal code and FAR calculations, I assume, are defined also. Is that correct?
Commissioner Wiskom, calculating net floor area is included in the municipal code.
Yeah, okay. So, so I think we have to rely on our municipal code. And, and, you know, this can go in one of two directions. If the applicant, if we were to uphold the appeal, the applicant has a choice of going back to Single Family Design Board and trying again for substantial conformance and going through the process, meeting number 11 and 12 probably. Or, as Ms. Osteringer said, I guess it would be a lawsuit. Is that correct?
It would be a writ of mandate, yes, to...
Okay.
Where the court is looking to, at the, what the decision makers did to see if there's adequate support for the decision that was made.
Okay.
They usually give deference to the decision makers.
Okay, thank you. So I guess with a kind of a bad taste in my mouth, I have to rely on the definitions in our municipal code. And that would lead me to say that I would go with staff's recommendation on this.
Is that a motion?
No, no.
We're not, that was just her...
We're just deliberating.
Thank you.
Commissioner DeLucio.
Okay. At this point, I, we can't, we're not in a position, we could send it back to Single Family anyway, and I probably would not want to, being that every, there's been so much turnover on that, on that board, that it would just start this process all over again. So reluctantly, I'm going to, I'm going to support your position, Commissioner Wiskom, that we, that we deny the appeal. And I am, I'm not happy about a couple of things, and I will say that. One is, I'm not so sure the intent was to put that to, by reducing the height, to raise the bottom portion of the, of the first, you know, bring the first story up, but that's below ground, so it's not counted. So I just don't think, I don't think that's above a level, if you, I don't know, whatever. And I'm not happy about that. I'm also not happy that the balconies, it says in the council resolution that the decks and balconies are located more than 15 feet from the property line. And you explained that the third-floor decks are 15 feet, but the balconies on the second are only 10 feet. I understand it's a modification, it's not, it's a, it's not a mandate, it's just a suggestion that they be 15 feet back. So I'm not happy with that also. But, but I think at this, at this state of the game, I think we just need to deny the appeal, and I really feel bad about that. But I do also need to agree with you that we need to go by what's in the municipal code.
Vice Chair Wardlow.
Well, I'm very torn on this. Clearly, this is a very personal topic to the neighbors, and obviously, the applicant has put a ton of work into this and has gone through many hearings to develop this project. So I think this is, this is a tough decision. You know, I think it's really unfortunate to see the approach that was taken by the applicant team in terms of deciding to kind of squish the building, even though, you know, from your perspective, you were really transparent with the Single Family Design Board. I think that, given that there's, the reason there's been so many hearings, and we've had so much discussion about this, is to be in response to the neighborhood concern. And clearly, the neighborhood concern was around the height, in terms of how it was perceived from the street and for the neighbors and all of that. Elevating the bottom floor does not address the intent of reducing this by one foot. And maybe I have a question for Ms. Osteringer. Like, when we're talking about conformance, substantially conforming with the one-foot reduction, right, if we're saying, in reality, it's been reduced by six inches, right, which we all discussed when you're talking about it from an elevation perspective, as Commissioner Barnwell's pointed out, if it's at six inches versus one foot, in terms of the actual reduction, then 50% is not substantially conforming, right? But I think the issue is that the, there's a debate over whether or not the intent of the Single Family Design Board and council was, was it one foot from an actual elevation perspective, or was it one foot of the overall building? And it seems like we don't have consensus on that. Is that, does staff or does anyone feel that there is consensus, that it was clear that they did not mean the actual elevation, and that everybody, council and the design board, was in agreement that that just meant the overall size of the building by one foot? Or, because I think that's where I'm confused. Because as a, as a, as a member of this community, I would have assumed that that meant the actual elevation of the building and how it would impact the community, right? But if, if per, you know, as my fellow commissioners are pointing out, we want to be respectful and aligned with city code, if, if it is that the council and the Single Family Design Board were comfortable with just an overall squishing of the building, then this would be in conformance, right? So I think that's, that's where I'm really struggling. And I don't know if staff or if any of my fellow commissioners want to weigh in with their thoughts. Yes, Commissioner Wiskom.
I just, I want to say, I don't disagree with you. I, I'm siding on the side of our municipal code and the definitions we have, because it is ambiguous. And I think the intent was to reduce the height by one foot. But we're not in a position to argue that, because we don't really know. Because City Council had some language, and Single Family Design Board had some language, but they were, they were okay with it. So I think they were okay with the squishing. So I'm, I'm feeling like, and, and by the definitions in our municipal code of height and FAR calculations, et cetera, I think we just have to err on the side of, that's where the strength in our decision lies, even though we're not feeling good about our decision. So that's kind of my answer.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiskom. I'll save my comments to hear from my fellow commissioners.
Okay, since I, the only one that hasn't spoken, I come at this maybe from a little bit different perspective than my fellow commissioners, in that I've gone through a whole number of substantial conformity hearings on all kinds of projects through my career. And the fact that the City of San Barbara doesn't have a definition of substantial conformance has just floored me, honestly. Some cities even have very extensive pages of levels of substantial conformity, and have applications for review for such, and definitions are just, you know, are very clear. We don't have that. So I'm going to use sort of a common professional parlance as to what substantial conformity is, which is, and I'll just use the City of San Diego as an example. If there's an increase in FAR, which we do have, 84 feet or 50-some feet increase, that would be a violation of substantial conformance in the City of San Diego. The other criteria that they have, which is highlighted here, is to ensure the expectation of the community during the approval process is upheld. And it's really clear through all this dialogue, is the expectation of the community was this thing was going to at least be lowered one more visible feet from, from the street view. And that hasn't been done. And we've, they did it another way, and I understand how you get to that calculation. So I will not, I will be supporting the appeal. I believe they've made a great case. I also believe that the calculation of FAR in this case is, we'll call it dubious, because of the way, the, the red line, we'll call it that, versus really what I would use as to the calculation, where the structural nature of this project really exists. So I believe we can make the findings here that this project was supposed to be lowered a foot physically from a sea level of elevation and has not, and therefore, it's not in substantial compliance. So... Any other commissioners have comments before we have a motion? Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur with your comments, and we'll be supporting the appeal. Thank you.
Commissioner Barnwell.
Well, this was poorly done from the beginning. And I agree with some of the comments made earlier, that we're kind of hiding behind some municipal code language. I guess we're in a trap right here. We, if we, I want to make sure I understand this completely. If we find in substantial conformity, that's it. They, the appeal stops, there's no, no one above us.
Chair Bauckey and Commissioner Barnwell, that's correct. But you should, the decision you need to make today, and not looking at what, what happens, is can you find this project in substantial conformance with what the plans that were given project design approval? If you cannot, then you should uphold the appeal.
Okay. So just keep it right here. Well, there's another architectural term that I'm familiar with since my early days, and it is the devil lives in the details. And the devil is living in the details of this. I share the opinion of Chair Bauckey. I, I, the spirit of this seems to have been dodged. And I don't know if it was intentional, or if everybody just kind of used to the fact that we can go here and we can do this thing. But I'll guarantee you that the City Council, the people who sit on the City Council, don't have any level of expertise to really understand this, this. And so when they make comments about things, I think they're using generic definitions for these. And I just don't think it was reduced by the foot, and I don't think the floor area ratio has the ring of truth to me. And so I, I'm going to be supportive of the appeal.
Commissioner, oh, Vice Chair Wardlow.
You know, I really appreciate the comments of my fellow commissioners, and I also feel that, you know, given the amount of back and forth that has happened on this topic, and the, whether or not it was the intent or not, but the confusion around some of the images that were provided to the Single Family Design Board, you know, in one of the initial hearings that showed, you know, that was clearly taken from a higher elevation that was not on the street, and then kind of showing a different image to council, there's been a lot of kind of confusion around this height topic. And, you know, again, I appreciate Commissioner Wiskom's comments of like the need to rely on our code. But I do believe that, you know, when council is weighing in on this, they are looking at this from a perspective as, as a community member that would say, one-foot reduction in height means a one-foot reduction in height. And if we're evaluating whether that has happened or not, that, that clearly has not happened from, from the elevation perspective, right? It has been squished. There's been very deliberate attempts by the applicant to comply with the one-foot reduction. And it's really unfortunate that there has been, I think, just confusion throughout the process on this. But at the end of the day, we are not, we have not conformed to the one-foot reduction in the eye of the public, which was what this was all about to begin with. So I will be supporting the appellant and upholding the appeal.
Okay, Commissioner DeLucio.
Yeah, this is really a tough one. So I have a question for the city attorney. I'm looking at the City Council, when they put their resolution together, actually, the direction was that the owner should reduce the second-floor plate height, the second-floor plate height by X and X, by a foot. And that's not what, was it in that direction that they're giving to the design board? If it says shall is an absolute word, it's not maybe, it's shall.
Chair Bauckey, Commissioner DeLucio, yes. And then it's the design boards that interpret that. So it was a shall.
Right. So they didn't, that's not, that's not the way it went. And also, I mean, I understand that the balconies, I, they also say decks and balconies are located more than 15 feet from the property line. That's what this resolution said for the City Council. So that bothers me, too. I understand it's not a mandatory, it's a suggestion, but it is in this City Council resolution. And I do know that when this came before the design board, there was, the biggest contention was about the height at that point, and two of the members weren't going to vote for it because of that, and two, I think there were four people there that day, four commissioners, and two were going to vote for it. And I know that it went on April 8 to the consent hearing, meeting. And I did watch the meeting, the next, the other meeting on the 8th, the regular meeting. And actually, all that happened there was, it was on consent calendar, and it, and it pretty much got approved. I think that our...
It's not a discussion, it's just approving.
Right, exactly. I think you just, you looked at it, I think. And you said, oh, yes, this is exactly what we decided in that, in the, in the morning meeting. But now I begin to think, do the other commissioners really realize what was done with the height? So for that reason, I think I'm going to change, I'm going to, I'm going to go with this group over here that's going to uphold the appeal.
Commissioner Wiskom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, the arguments made are compelling, and I appreciate Chair Bauckey, your looking up definitions of substantial conformance. I think we have the intent of the City Council, which was specifically because the second floor was the highest floor, to lower the plate height of the second floor by a foot. And then we have the interpretation by the Single Family Design Board, and I watched that hearing where they interpreted it, that City Council wanted it lowered by a foot, and it didn't, let's not be, let's not make it the second floor, let's just lower it by a foot. And then we have the applicant who interprets the intent as something different. And I'm, I'm, I appreciated Commissioner Barnwell's definition of elevation, because I think that's really where this was going. And so I'm, I'm actually switching sides. The, this is really where it was going. And, and I think, you know, as much as there's risk with the definitions that are in our municipal code, and has the applicant met them, and blah, 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 I, you've got to go with the community. And there's a certain element of unease of the way this has evolved, because I think the bottom line was lower it by a foot. Don't raise up the finished floor level by a foot, and then lower it by one foot, six and three-quarter inches, or whatever it turned out to be. So I'm, I'm going to vote to uphold the appeal. Thank you.
Okay, so who would like to make a motion on this?
Chair Bauckey, just want to advise, when you make your motion, I see where this is going. Please make sure that you, if the motion is to uphold appeal, that you say specifically the reasons why it does not substantially conform in the motion.
Commissioner Barnwell wants to take a shot at it?
I'll take a shot. I will, I will be welcome to any assistance that can be offered. I make a motion that we uphold the appeal for the reasons that it, the, the application in front of us did not meet neither the letter nor the spirit of the City Council's request to lower the height of the building. And I don't want to get too, any more punitive than that. It does not, the, the, the project in front of us does not conform to the spirit of the council's directive. Primarily, it has to do with the height, but the deck issue is another one. And I think overriding for all of us is just the appearance to the general public, that we're, you know, we're, we're listening, and we're, we're not trying to hide anything. But anyway, it's a, in terms of the formal language, I support the appeal. And the finding is that the application in front of us does not conform to the directives from the City Council.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Chair Bauckey.
Yes.
From staff. It would be really helpful for the applicant and all parties involved if the motion could include language as to what the applicant should do to make the plan substantially conform to the project design approval plans. And there should be quantitative measurements that go into that.
Okay. Is that okay with council, that we can do that?
Yes.
Well, I, I think it needs to include, the height needs to be, the elevation needs to be reduced by one foot. I think the, the floor area issue should be completely understood by the Single Family Design Board. And I think the deck setbacks should be fully understood by the design board, all of these things, in, in light of what the council's original decisions were. But for, for us, I think it is the deck, I think is the elevation, I think is the floor area ratio, and that, that infamous red wall.
Commissioner DeLucio, discussion.
More specifically, we should have the decks and the balconies need to be located more than 15 feet from the property line. That's what I, that's one direction I would give.
Okay.
And then I, and then you spoke about the height. And I think also, this should, now, can we have this go back to the, as far as the FAR goes, can it go back to staff to reevaluate to, you know, to be sure that this isn't 85% or...
No, the motion's getting too complicated.
Okay. So now I'll stick to my decks and my balconies, they need to be more than 15 feet back from the property line. And I guess the height, those are the two overriding things that I think that are causing us to uphold the appeal.
Is that acceptable to the maker of the motion and the senator?
The maker of the motion will reduce it to two things, the deck and the height, and we'll leave the floor area ratio out of it, because that's pretty complicated. And...
No.
No? Want to keep it in?
I think you should keep it in.
Okay, well then, I kind of do, too. Okay. So we got three things. We got, they need to look at the floor area ratio, they need to raise the elevation one foot, and they need to pull the decks back.
Chair Bauckey, can I, may I ask you a question, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Point of clarification on the height reduction, is that from the project design approval height of 34 feet, eight and a half inches? Or is the foot supposed to be taken from the final approval set?
What was in front of the council when they said to lower it one foot?
Thirty-four feet.
Whatever that dimension is, that elevation of that needs to be reduced one foot, measured by elevation, not by tape measure.
Then you, they use that, who are plate, they would...
No, well, let's not go there, please.
Yeah, we don't want to go there. That's, no, but that's what they...
The plate issue is...
Chair Bauckey, my suggestion would be that we, we go back to the original elevation on whatever set of plans that was, that before, before the first floor got raised a foot. So go back to...
Yeah, I concur.
232? Was that, was that the elevation, 232? And then...
Chair, Chair Bauckey, and to the commission, the motion is limited to the plans that received project design approval with the instructions from council.
Right, right.
Okay, so we have to go back, so in those plans, it was already raised a foot?
Well, the measurement of height reduction will be taken from the set of plans that the council was looking at, when they said lower it one foot. And the lowering process will be measured by elevation, not by this, this strange little thing.
That's correct. I believe the elevation shown on screen has the 266 foot, eight and a half inches above sea level, which was that, which was what was reviewed at council and for SFB project design approval. And applicant can confirm?
Does that sound all right with everybody? Okay, so it's elevation, deck, and FAR.
Okay. With that, Ms. Johnson, can we have a roll call vote?
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. I'll take roll call vote. Commissioner Lodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiskom?
Yes.
Commissioner Boss?
Yes.
Commissioner DeLucio?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wardlow?
Yes.
Chair Bauckey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.[1706.83][1706.83](APPLAUSE) All right. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton-Roll for bringing this item to us. Next is the administrative agenda. Do we have a staff hearing officer liaison report?
No report.
No report. Do any other commissioners have a liaison report?
Do you need this?
Nope, I see, I see none. Okay. With that, I will adjourn the meeting at 4:59. That concludes the June 6, 2024 Planning Commission hearing. Our next meeting will be Thursday, June 13. Thank you all for being here.